You know, for a windbreak, and you can sit in there and talk to them on the other side of the glass. So, so it was kind of cool. So I referred to her as inmate zero nine zero one because that was her birthday. So she's in there rehabbing. So, well, Mayor, this morning, we have some things that I just wanted to share with you all. You know, with topics of prayer, we have the remembrance of nine eleven coming up. We have the pandemic that's going on, the election, the fires that are all around us, businesses that are suffering, pressure and anxiety, worry and frustration. I mean, we can all agree that that is the job that you have, you guys have to try to fix, you know, and our prayers are with you and, and we're behind you. As, as I've texted you a few times, Mayor, we've got your six in prayer, just as much as we have the fellow leadership of this community. You know, I think we've all heard the phrase once or twice in our lifetime that the way out is through. And I believe that God's going to get us through this, and we're a strong team, and Carson City is always, always, when they got up to bat, they swung hard and they hit hard. And, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna do well as we get through this. So, and the Lord will see us through. In Psalm forty-six, we find great comfort with the Lord being with us. It says, "God is our fortress. God is our refuge. He's our strength. He's a very present help in time of trouble. Therefore, we will not fear, though the earth gives way, though the mountains be removed into the heart of the sea, though the waters roar and foam, though the mountains tremble with swelling." Then there's a beautiful word in Hebrew. It's called se-lah. And the word se-lah means to, to stop, think, reflect, reflect upon that, let it resonate a little bit. And then it goes down into the, the closing of the, of the psalm. It says, "Be still and know that I am God. I will be exalted among the nations. I will be exalted among the earth. The Lord of hosts is with us. The God of Jacob is our fortress." Se-lah. So it tells us to think about it again. So, so with that, let's, let's just offer a time of prayer. Lord, we thank you so much that we can come together as, as fellow human beings, side by side, one, one to the other, shoulder to shoulder, Lord. And, and we know that the way out is through and the way through is with you, that, Lord, your, your promises are that you will never leave us nor forsake us. Lord, you are with us. You are a very present help in time of trouble. You are closer than a brother, the New Testament says. So, Lord, when we get filled with angst, we get filled with anxiety and worry, Lord, we ask you that you would reveal yourself so close. Lord, we pray for what's going on around us, Lord. We pray for a cure. We pray for something that would just be a marvelous thing to push back this, this evil of this pandemic, Lord God. We pray for the businesses that are suffering, the ones that have closed. Lord, we ask you that you would be the God of provision. Lord, we ask you to be with our firefighters. Lord, as we wake up every morning with smoke around us, we know that there are brothers and sisters of humanity, brothers and sisters in Christ, Lord, that, that are out fighting fires, putting their life in harm's way. So, Lord, we ask you for, we ask you for gentle rains to put them out. Lord, that would be awesome. Lord, we, we pray for the economics that are around us. We pray that we would be able to run into you as our, our refuge and our fortress. Lord, I ask you for our community here, that, Lord, that you would give this room and everyone in it, our leaders, our supervisors, our mayor, our sheriff, our fire chief, all those that oversee the things that go on in the city, great guidance and great wisdom, Lord, great temperance, great patience, that, Lord, that we would not allow frustration to become anger and anger to become outburst. Lord, we ask for peace that passes all understanding in our hearts and our minds and our soul. Lord, we are mindful of what took place nineteen years ago. Lord, this month is a, a day that, that was a defining moment in our, in America's history. And, Lord, it defined us as a people of resolve, of strength, of commitment, of help to one another, story after story of, of people helping one another. Lord, that's what America does. That's what the backbone of this awesome country is. And we thank you that we're part of it for a time such as this, the esters, as it were, of today. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pat. That was wonderful. Thank you. You want to spend just a second because we're going to have a kind of a real modified nine eleven ceremony. You want to talk a little bit about that?
Sure. As, as our discussion that I had with you, Mayor, I, I know that your concern is, is just paramount for, for the safety of the, of the community. So as much as we would all like to gather at that amazing memorial site, we, we really shouldn't. We really can't at this, at this moment. So what the Carson City Ministerial Fellowship has done along with, with your, with you, with, in your permission, is, and with, you know, Tom Jones over at Carson Florist, we've worked together and we're going to drape, we're going to drape the memorial site with just a beautiful bouquet of flowers. And throughout the day, you know, we're going to invite people just to, at their leisure, bring their families out, spend it, you know, spend some moments privately instead of gathering in a big group, you know, you know, maybe next year, we can just make it even that much bigger and do something. But for this year, you know, at, at eight forty-five, we're going to go ahead and drape that because it was, I think it was eight forty-six point forty is that the first attack that happened. We know it started like eight fourteen in the mornings when planes were taking off. You know, the chronology, when you, when you read it, is just phenomenal of how that day panned out. But just to go out there and spend some time in reflection, look at that piece of twisted metal and let it remind us of what that day meant to us, but also let it remind us of, of how we got through it, our, our amazing first responders that were there, the fire department, the police, and, and then watching the citizens of the United States of America band together. It's amazing how good we can band together when we're of one accord. Literally, in the, in the Old Testament, when the Lord separated the voices, I might have mentioned this at a previous time at the board, but the, the voices were separated. We know it's the, you know, the Tower of Babel. The Lord Himself said at that time, "There's nothing that they can do, that there's nothing that they can't do with, in one voice." So He separated the voices because they were running amok, let's face it. You know, people would just run amok without God, you know? So He separated the voices. But I, I believe that the voices were reunited the day of Pentecost. Because the, the people were hearing the Lord in an upper room. There's a hundred and twenty people praising the Lord, and all the dialects that were listening, were, were listening, and they were hearing one voice. So I believe that the voices can be unified once again, you know? And that's what we're going to do that day, throughout the day, even if we have to do it one by one, you know, or family by family, as we would go out and just look at that. And, and Mayor, I can't thank you enough for what our city has done to put that memorial site there. Because I mean, it's a beautiful one. When we put that up and you were out there and we dedicated that piece of property for that remembrance, we need to do that. As Americans, we need to remember the fight that we've been through. We need to remember the history that we've had, the things that have changed in our country over two hundred years, making us a great country.
Thank you, Pat. So that's what's going to go on, on nine eleven. If you, if you can get a chance, and like I said, we're not going to have a big gathering there, but throughout the day, maybe come out, take a look at the, at the memorial there and remember what happened on that day nineteen years ago. And speaking of that, could I call in to Chief Slaman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, our chief firefighter here?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks, Pat. Your fellowship.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for the extra time, please.
All right. Dan will take up item number five, public comment. We've got some public comment that's been writing. I want to let everybody know that we have received that in writing, and we have read that. If there's any public comment that's on the phone, now's the time to do it. I don't know if, we got Desi back there. Anybody on the phone for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Who's on? Who's on? And it's kind of cumbersome, but just give us your name and then go forward. We'll do our best.
Caller, when you hear a beep, it is your turn to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Caller, when you hear the beeps, it's your turn to speak. Please state your name
for the record.
Can we, we got to hear a little bit better up here. Oh, it's a radio.
Caller, when you hear the beep, it's your turn to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi, you're on. This is the mayor here. Go ahead. Give us your name, please, and go ahead. This is terrible. I mean, I don't know how, how we do this virtually. Desi, anybody back? Could we get back online with, with this gentleman?
Mr. Mayor, we need to try one more time for this caller. We may be having some audio, audio issues.
Okay. Give it a try.
Caller, when you hear a beep, it's your turn to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Okay, Dan, what do we do now?
Caller, when you hear a beep, it's your turn to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Go ahead.
All right, I think we figured this out. Apologies for the, for the problem. So we're going to start over with public comment. So caller, when you hear the beep, it's your turn for public comment. Please state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name is Chris Diego. I'm with Verizon Wireless Community Outreach.
Good morning.
Before I begin, hello?
Good, yes, good morning. We got you.
Okay. Before I begin, I just wanted to bring to your attention that the live stream on the city's website is not working properly. And so I had to switch over to Facebook, but there's a number of our team members who do not have access to Facebook, so just wanted to make the city aware of the fact that the stream is not currently live on the city's website.
All right, we'll look into it. Thank you.
Yeah. And then, and then I'd like to get into public comment, if I may, specific to the small cell.
Sure. Could you hear me all right?
What's that?
Could you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, go.
Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Supervisors. My name is Chris Diego. I'm with Verizon Wireless, where I'm the Community Outreach Partner assigned to Northern Nevada. In my role, I'm primarily responsible for working with and providing education to community stakeholders, which include elected officials, city staff, homeowner associations, residents, as well as businesses and nonprofits. I'd like to begin by thanking staff for allowing Verizon to participate in this process. Verizon has participated in a number of industry meetings that the city organized, and we've also had several meetings on our own directly with city staff. We believe that our efforts thus far have led us to craft documents that require only very minor tweaks to ensure a successful deployment of this technology. With respect to the small cell policy, we currently have an open dialogue with the city in regard to the letter that our consultant, the Wireless Policy Group submitted, which outlines the remaining issues that we request be revised. We look forward to continuing to work with the city on the effort to bring forth a mutually agreeable policy at the September seventeenth board meeting. Now, with respect to the master license agreement, negotiations are ongoing. We had a call yesterday with city, with the city where we walked staff through the sections of the agreement that present barriers that keep Verizon from being able to enter into an agreement in its current form. There are two items that I would like to bring to your attention this morning that present issues for Verizon. The first is section four point one related to application fees, paragraph A of the agreement. We request that application fees be moved from the agreement into the policy or a fee schedule and structured as a deposit account. We believe that the city's permit fees would be more appropriately structured as a deposit rather than a, a standard flat fee. Additionally,
Say that again. Say that again, please. I didn't understand what you said there.
Sure. So the, the first area within the MLA that presents an issue for us is section four point one related to application fees. We request that the application fees within the MLA be moved into the agreement, or I'm sorry, not into the agreement, into a, into the policy or a fee schedule and structured as a deposit account. We believe that the city's permit fees would be more appropriately structured as a deposit rather than a standard flat fee. And in addition to this, the FCC states that these are required to be based on actual and reasonable cost rather than an estimated cost. So by using a deposit account, we'd ensure that the appropriate fees are paid for the time spent reviewing the applications. So that's the first issue that, that we have within the MLA or the master license agreement.
I guess you're going to, you're going to have to tell me why the, why the non-deposit, why the way I set up right now doesn't work to provide for actual costs. What's going on there?
So the, the, the way it's currently structured is that it's an estimated cost, and the FCC requires that it be based on an actual and reasonable cost. And so what we're requesting is that we set up a, a deposit account so that we can ensure that the appropriate, so that time, the time spent reviewing the applications is tracked, and then we are paying for the actual time spent reviewing the application. And, and we've provided language to the city that, that could be incorporated into the policy that would allow for a deposit account rather than a flat fee.
Okay. I think I see where you're going. All right. Go on, keep going on.
And, and the second barrier is the, in the agreement in section four point two, it's related to the attachment fee, paragraph B. There is a fee of seventy-five dollars for an electric meter fee. We would request removal of the seventy-five dollar electric fee or clarification in the language, as the fee may not apply in every instance. So we may not always be installing an electric meter, and for that reason, we don't feel that we should have to pay the seventy-five dollars every time we submit an application to the city. So it should only be applicable when, when there's a meter that's being installed on a, on a pole.
All right. We'll take this up when then, are you going to be here when we take this up on a, as an agenda item?
Yes. I'll be on. And then we also have our consultant that would be able to answer questions as well.
All right. One of the questions I was going to ask you, so you could be thinking about is how, if you use a deposit method, how do, how do you determine what's reasonable error? I mean, because it's all done by the time you get, you know, it leaves, it leaves the, the, the dollar analysis to the, to the company. I mean, it doesn't seem to be like the, the community has a right, has an, has a, the ability to go back and look at that fee. Anyway, you think about that while we go on through the agenda here. Okay? But thank you.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anybody else on the line?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Caller, when you hear the beep, it's your turn to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Denny French, Carson City, Nevada.
Hello, Denny.
Hi, Mayor. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm calling because of my concerns relating to small cell wireless. It's great to find ways to fill the coffers, but I would hope that the health and environmental needs will be considered, and we should proceed with caution. It's a little premature to be talking costs and such without having some of those things analyzed or at least reviewed, but I sure appreciate this experience. It's, there's a few kinks on this side, just to let you know. I was able to hear, and I wasn't supposed to necessarily, some of your meeting and the prior comment by the gentleman, a little bit about the in mailing through the vote deal, and it was broken up, so I didn't catch all of his comment. And I just listened to the gentleman, Chris, and I didn't catch his last name of wireless and Verizon. I, I catched your comment about, this is putting the horse before the cart on costing analysis and fees for the metering. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing your responses to that. But unfortunately, I was told by Rachel of City Hall that I wouldn't be able to listen to the whole meeting on this, this line. And so I'll probably lose out on hearing that, but I'll look forward to the transcripts. And thank you all very much for hanging in there. I really appreciate it. I'm trying to embrace this new technology as I want to be involved. Thank you very much. Did you, did you hear me at all, Mayor?
Well, anyway, go ahead.
Did you, I just wanted to know if you heard me because I wasn't hearing any, any oohs or ahs or, or anything on your side that went dead.
We get it. We get it here. I just, I'm just telling you, I think I saw you in City Hall and I, I didn't get a chance to say hello to you. That's all.
Well, well, thank you. I, I hope that they passed on my hello to you. I, I appreciate that you're busy and were not expecting me. So, but thank you for being thoughtful about that. I wish you good. Have, take care.
Okay. Thanks, Denny. All right.
Now, how, how do I disconnect with you so I'm not interfering with other callers?
So just hang up.
Oh, okay.
If you're done with the comment, we can mute the line.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
No, Mr. Mayor. No one else for public comment at this time.
All right. Thank you. Let, we'll take public comment. We usually take public, we, before COVID, we take public comment at each agenda item. We're not there because it's too difficult to do that. So we generally take public comment only at the, at the beginning and the end of the agenda, much like other jurisdictions have done historically. But I see my light is on here. Chief, did you want to say, did I miss your light?
Yeah, I just, well, I, I just wanted to ask, the real chief wanted to make a comment. I just wanted to point that out. But also, I, I heard someone say that our feed is not available, and I just wanted to confirm that we're complying with everything we need to comply with and that we're doing what we're supposed to be doing for people to be able to hear us because I have a concern about that. If people can't see or hear us, it's...
All right. We'll have, we'll have the staff. Stephanie, you want to take that one on?
I do. Thank you. Stephanie Hicks, Deputy City Manager. We had our staff, actually, Rachel Snyder. She plugged in the Facebook Live feed on the website. So when they go in to see where they would normally view the live meeting, there is a, there is a live feed. So we, we did kind of a workaround, but they are working on the other issues.
But the TV is on too, right? Channel one nine one?
It is not at this moment.
Oh, it's not either?
No.
But the marvelous electronics.
Just recording, right?
We are doing.
All right.
So are we good, open meeting law wise?
That's what we're going to ask, Dan.
So, Mr. Mayor, I was just having a sidebar real quickly with Stephanie, and so she did confirm with me again that we have a minimum of one live feed at this time. I just do, I guess I do want to ask on the record to the city manager's office, I wasn't part of that email chain, but with the availability of that live streaming venue, is, is that made public? I suppose my question is, do members of the public realize that that is where they can access the live stream? And, and if the answer to that is yes, then, you know, we're, we are compliant with the requirements.
Yes, it's in the same spot where they would go in online on our website. So the feed does come up.
Well, in that case, so long as we have a minimum of one feed where the public can access and view or listen to this meeting, that's the requirement, is the, the access has to be either by audio or visual or both. It doesn't have to be both, but as long as there's a minimum of one, you know, access channel, then that's sufficient. And obviously, you know, that would be the alternative means to coming here in present, in person, because that's not allowed right now. But, you know, I, I feel sufficiently comfortable. And in fact, the city manager is pointing out to me right now on her laptop, the live feed, and it looks like we are live, so that should be compliant and sufficient.
All right. All right. I have another light up here. Who's, is that the?
It's me.
Pardon me?
It's me.
Okay. John, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that, first of all, I recognize as we're having these problems, we have problems on all fronts. The reason I'm still wearing a mask is because there is no Plexiglas between me and staff. So consequently, I would ask that for the next meeting, we have some put up here. I'm sure I'm not going to catch it, but nevertheless, I've been very vigilant about what I consider the percentages of not catching this because I'm older than anybody up on this dais, including even the mayor. Secondarily, I want to say, oh, thank you. I'm not criticizing anybody because this is the kind of stuff that we have to go as we learn. So at any rate, I just wanted to point that out. Secondarily, I wanted to thank Pat for his prayer mentioning nine eleven and give a shout out to my predecessor in his seat. We didn't agree on everything, obviously, or I wouldn't have run against him, but he was instrumental in helping bring the, the twisted metal from nine eleven and where you're going to have the ceremony, or at least the virtual ceremony. So a shout out to him. Thank you very much.
Thanks, and thanks for the call on the, down there. We didn't mean to put you in the, we didn't mean to put you in the, the bad seat there. All right, but we'll get that fixed.
I think I'm going to live.
All right. All right. I don't, I'm still got a light under clerk. Oliver, you okay? All right. Wait a minute. The DA, I had your light on. Okay. All right. Just so it's all on the right page here. Okay. Pardon me?
He wants public comment.
Chief. Chief Slaman. The real, what do we call him? The real chief? And you the unreal chief?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor. I, I am just the current fire chief. There, there, there are at least two real fire chiefs here, so.
Well, we're well protected then.
Sean, yes, we are. Sean Slaman, your fire chief, your current fire chief. I'd like to introduce to you our new, new deputy fire chief, Aaron Lowe. He started his first week of work with us this week. We have stolen him from Aptos La Salva Fire District in Santa Cruz County, where he was their fire chief. So we have a lot of fire chiefs in the room, and I'll turn the, the mic over to Chief Lowe so he can introduce himself to you.
Good. Hi, Aaron. Chief Lowe, welcome to Carson City. You're welcome. As I mentioned before, before the meeting got started, you're joining what I believe to be one of the best fire departments in the United States. I'll go out that far. And so we look forward to having you aboard. Go ahead and tell us about yourself and what you, what you want to do and not do, but.
Well, first off, thank you very much, both to Carson City, the community and staff for, for allowing me to be part of this community. I think that's one of the things that working in the fire service allows us to do is, is to serve. So with that, this, I'm working on my twenty-seventh year in the fire service. I spent most of it in Chico, California. Um, I spent most of it in Chico, California, uh, where we were highly active in, in fires, both in, uh, the community and in the urban interface. And then, um, I've been proactive in the wild and urban interface policy committees and stuff like that. But, uh, what I enjoy most about being in the fire service is, um, the interactions we have, both with government and the communities, and Carson City has that, that character that I'd like to, to be a part of, um, both myself and my family. And then I'm thankful that Chief Slaman was, uh, was, picked me to be his deputy, so I'll be the current deputy fire chief, um.
Very good.
Please let me know if there's anything I do to help you, if you have any questions.
We're happy to have you aboard. And while we got both of you here, uh, one of you, maybe you, Chief Slaman, you want to tell us a little bit about where our folks are on these fires and what's going on in California?
Sure. So it, uh, as we all know, and as we're aware, if we step outside today, uh, it has been a very busy and very active fire season. Um, we currently have eight firefighters, um, operating on two different fires, the Slink Fire just to the south of us, um, in the Topaz area, uh, on the California side. And then we have, uh, four other firefighters working the Butte, Tahima, Tahima County Lightning, uh, complex fire. So what they call complex fires is usually multiple small to medium fires. Oftentimes, they mold together to, to create a large fire, or it's just a way of centralizing command to deal with multiple fires in an area. So our crews are active, um, they, um, they're getting, they're very well taken care of. They are safe, uh, but it is exhausting and tiring work, and we're, we're just entering September, and certainly definitely not out of the woods in our area and, and the rest of the western United States.
Could you just spend a minute? There's a, sometimes there's a lot of smoke out here. Uh, I don't know that we've ever had, we've had a, a call that says, don't go outside. I mean, we've been close to that call, but could you let the public know, you know, what they should do? If they don't have to go outside, they probably should stay inside if there was smoke here? What, what's your advice on that?
So certainly, anybody with any kind of a respiratory illness or pre-existing conditions, uh, they need to monitor themselves. The, usually the best time to get out is in the early mornings, uh, before the, the smoke settles in too thickly. Um, our weather forecast, eh, we're going to heat up, and we're not going to get much for winds this weekend, which is, normally would be a cause for celebration, but, uh, um, we're not going to be pushing the smoke out. The best thing that I would recommend is, um, if you have, uh, online services, to Google Carson City air quality, and that will give you current status for our air quality, and they define it in terms for unhealthy, these sensitive groups, which is probably about where we're at now, to extreme unhealthy or to, and to good. Um, and so that changes often daily as the winds change and the smoke settles in or moves out.
Okay. Any other, anybody have any questions, uh, Chief Slaman? All right. Thanks to all your folks. Oh, Brad, go ahead.
Yeah, I can just say welcome to Aaron. I, I grew up in Corning, so we're neighbors, old neighbors.
I'm sure we have some people we know.
You got to be careful when he says that, because he'll do a background check on you pretty quick, pretty quick. All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, folks. And tell your, tell your troops to stay safe, okay? It, it, for those who think we're just sending our firefighters out, you know, we get paid for this. Uh, I hate to put it in terms of money, but we get paid when we send people down to, to help fight these fires. But it's a good thing that, you know, we're, we're in these, they're in this fire season together, because we're in these mountains together, and we're, uh, so thanks for everything. We all have to cooperate to get this done. Okay. All right. Uh, did I miss anybody else on public comment? I don't see any. Okay. Let's, uh, then take a, uh, item six, possible approval of the minutes. Everybody had a chance to look at the August 6 minutes?
I moved...
Motions in order, thanks.
I move to approve the minutes of the Carson City Board of Supervisors for August 6, 2020, with two previously submitted typographical corrections.
Very good. There's motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Carried unanimously. Okay, let's take up the agenda. City manager, we need anything off, changes to the agenda?
No changes.
Board, do we want any changes? Other than reduce the size of the agenda packet?
Really?
All right. All right, then unless there's an objection, we'll, we'll take the, we'll adopt the agenda as published, and we'll move on now to the consent agenda. Anybody want anything pulled off the consent agenda for individual discussion? I don't see any, so then we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, uh, consisting of two items, then we'll get ready to the real, real agenda. Okay, go.
I move to approve the consent agenda as published with item eight and nine.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay, let's now take up, uh, item number 11, purchasing and contracts. Carol, you going to do this?
Good morning, Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. This is, um, a request through the courts department. This is for contract 20300153 for legal services through Washoe Legal Services. This is a not to exceed annual amount of 121,000 through September of 2023. So the total contract amount will be 363,000, um, to be funded by the courts department in the general fund, and Max Cortez is available.
We got Max Cortez from the, the court administrator. Max, you wanted to go into a little bit more detail on it?
Um, for the record, Max Cortez, court administrator. Um, the contract is for child and, um, protected persons guardianship cases advocacy. Um, currently, we're using Washoe Legal Services. This board approved a prior contract in 2017. Um, and that was when the legislature passed new laws, uh, mandating attorney services for child and guardianship. Um, at that time, we came to the board, we had spoken with the public defender's office. We were hoping that they would take up child advocacy, um, because the city's already paying for their services. Um, they said they had an interest, but they didn't have a program that was, um, currently up and running, and we had to start the services on.
Get a, get a little closer to the mic, Max.
Okay. Um, in addition, we reached out to Nevada Legal Services at that time and other nonprofit attorney services, and they came in at about 174,000, so significantly higher. Um, then we reached out to Washoe Legal Services, and they came in at 105. Um, so we started contracting with them. Um, there's extensive training in these cases. Um, the court abides by statewide best practices, which means that they have to have not only court hearings, but in placement hearings, in-home meetings, um, that has, have to take place. So this was a really change in the child advocacy, um, and the guardianship protected persons, um, arena. Um, we reached out to the clerk recorder at that time in 2017, and we, um, in, in the new laws, there's a provision that allows for the county and cities to increase clerk recorder fees to help pay for the services. Um, at that time, the former clerk recorder was not in support of fee increases, um, so the, the board went ahead and approved that contract, um, without additional funding to offset the cost. Um, in January of 2020 of this year, the board did, um, approve fee increases. Um, the current clerk recorder supported those fee increases. So we are anticipating that with those fee increases and the original funds that are collected can be used to offset the current contract. Um, Washoe Legal Services also utilize its grants, and they are, um, have a grant currently that is assisting with the child advocacy cases. Um, so the cost is essentially the same of what they were charging us in 2017 for the three years. Um, but in our guardianship cases, um, our caseload has significantly increased, so they did ask for a $16,000 increase. Um, but as I stated, with the fee increases that the board approved in 2020, uh, in January, that's when they were effective, um, we're, we're hoping that those fees will cover the current contract as well as any additional, um, cost.
Thank you, Brad.
Max, um, so going forward at the end of this three-year contract, assuming that it gets approved here shortly, um, because Washoe Legal Services is subsidizing the cost of the program with grant funds, if they were to lose those grant funds, then the cost of this contract, when it comes in front of us again, is going to go up significantly. If and when that ends up being the case, then are you comfortable that you will have the funds necessary to continue with the program? Or would you look at scaling the program? Or what would the plan be, be at that point?
So, um, unfortunately, it's mandated that the judges appoint attorneys, um, for the child advocacy. So the child advocacy are in our 432B cases. Those are children that have been severely neglected and abused and are removed from the home. So the, the legislature passed, um, laws that the court is mandated to provide attorneys to represent those children's interests. Um, along with those mandates, they mandated that in guardianship cases, that the court is mandated to appoint attorneys to, um, represent the protected persons, which was formerly the ward of the, of the, um, guardianship. And so there's, it's not really a program, it's mainly a mandate that we have to provide those attorneys, we have to appoint those attorneys, um, in addition for, um, children advocacy and termination of rights cases. So when a parent is going through the court system and their rights are going to be terminated, um, the legislature passed the law that that child is to be given an attorney to represent their interests, to advocate for them. So, um, I will say though, that the Washoe Legal Services, they, uh, write grants all the time. Um, they, um, support the, their, what they do as a nonprofit, um, from grants as well as from counties that Carson City is not the only county that pays for these services. Um, they also provide services in Douglas County, Washoe County, of course, and I believe they're also in some of the rural other counties. So they do seek out grants, and that was one of the reasons why, uh, we came to the board and said that they are prepared to provide these services and have other sort resources to, um, assist with offsetting the cost.
Okay. Any other questions? Max? Yeah, Lori?
Maybe you can or can't answer this. Um, since the legislation passed and you've had the court appointed attorneys, do you think the desired goal has actually been met? Has it been helpful to the processes?
I think at the beginning of, um, when it became effective in October's, um, first 2017, there was a, a very large learning curve, um, because attorneys, uh, the nature of an attorney, they're adversarial and they're, you know, uh, fighting their cases. So there was a lot of training that went in, not only for the attorney services, but also for the court, um, to see what is truly their role. So I think that, um, protected persons, um, we haven't, fortunately, in Carson, haven't had cases where a protected person through a guardianship has been, um, taken advantage of, severely taken advantage of abuse or money stolen from them. But that has happened in other, um, courts, um, other counties in Nevada. And so, like I said, fortunately, we have not experienced that here. Um, but I do believe that attorney does, um, does play a very good role, because there is somebody there for the protected person, looking at their finances, talking to them, making sure that they're not being abused or taken, uh, advantage of. Um, in the child advocacy, I definitely think that having a, a person who is, is not active in the case, um, as far as, um, the, the parent's attorney, um, when it's a termination of rights or a 432B case, um, that, that child has an adult, an attorney to, um, speak to. Um, it takes a lot of training, and, and those relationships are built on trust, and those cases can go on for years. It's not just like a two-court hearing. So I think that having those children, having a, an adult that has a voice that can advocate for them, um, is also a benefit to those children. Um, those cases are high emotions and very intense, um, as you can imagine.
Very good. John, did your light go off? Okay? Okay. All right. City manager, Nancy, when you get, when they get a chance, I know they've got a lot of electronics going on, but could they come up sometime between meetings here and fix the lights? Because when John turns his light on, it shows the clerk and stuff like that. I just, so just try to figure out, it's hard to control who's speak, who wants to speak.
Okay.
Just have to, I think they're, just make sure they're connected right. Okay? All right. Uh, any other questions? Max?
Um, I don't know if I said this, but the district court judges didn't want me to relay they're in court, but they do support the contract, they do support the increase, and they have been very happy with their services as, as well as the juvenile special master. She presides over a lot of those cases as well.
Very good. All right. Anything else? Motions in order.
Uh, I move to approve contract number 20300153 is presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Carried. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Give our best to the courts. They doing all right over there?
Um, we're doing as good as everyone else.
You know, always, if they need something over there, you know, dealing with what, what we're dealing with and all this pandemic and stuff like that, don't hesitate to call, okay?
Thank you, and I will thank you for the city's support as well as the facilities. They've been amazing, like with all of the partitions, they've done the same thing at the court, and, um, we are all on this together, so we're day at a time.
Very good. Okay. You're from, you're from the middle of California too, aren't you, Fresno?
Yes.
Do you know, do you know the deputy fire chief?
I don't. I didn't, I didn't have the pleasure of working.
Well, I was going to tell him, you know, he's got supervisor Ponkowski, he's got you to do background checks. You better, you better watch his Ps and Qs.
I'm sure he'll be great.
Because I know you're in touch with the judges down there.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you all. It's great to see you.
Let's take up 11, uh, Bravo. This is a brush truck refurbishment. Carol, tell us what we're doing here.
Sure. Um, again, Carol Akers, purchasing and contracts. Uh, this is for contract 19300124. This is for a refurbishment of a 2001 International for 4800 model. It's a, uh, type three brush truck, uh, through Fire Trucks Unlimited, and this is for a total amount not to exceed 170,665 dollars.
How, how long has this been on the agenda to, to do?
Well, we, yeah, this one was a, a struggle. We put out, uh, a request for bid on this and received no bids. We extended that to allow for, you know, interest, and we still received nothing, so then poor Rich had to reach out to, um, and I think because it's such a specialized field, that there really are just very minimal players in the game, so, um, it, it did take, take a while to kind of work through the process and get some good, good bids and proposals.
Brad, you want to jump in here? You want to wait till we hear further?
No.
Rick?
Rich, um, uh, first, I'd like to request that we open discussion on, on item, um, item 11C as well as item 11B. They're similar items.
That's fine. Let's do that. Rich, you got that?
Yes, sir.
You okay with that?
With separate motions for each item.
Don't be sad, but we'll talk about it. I think I know where he's going, so.
So, Rich, what I did was, um, uh, I looked at, going through the information that we were given, I, I looked at the useful estimated life for refurbished vehicles versus new, and then at the annual cost basis based on that, to see which was a better value. And on the, uh, on the brush truck, it ends up being a cost of about 27,000 a year for a new truck with a 15-year estimated life, and then on a refurbished truck, it's about 34,000 per year for a, a 10-year estimated life. And then on the, um, pumper truck, it ends up being about 67,000 a year for refurbished and about 70,000 for new. Um, so it's almost the same cost either way. So can you walk us through the process that you go through to determine which is the better value, new versus refurbished, and how you come to that conclusion? better value, new versus refurbished, and how you come to that conclusion?
Basically, it was a collaboration between myself and the previous supervisor at Fleet, talking about what we currently have for trucks. And we were going off of overall cost and total cost. We didn't look at year to year. The trucks that we currently have, that were decided to get refurbished, the guys are familiar with in the fire department, we're familiar with them. We have parts for them already. That is a lot of the reason why that was chosen to do a refurb on these things, because we've already got an infrastructure set into place for these existing trucks, versus starting all over with a new one.
And staff is comfortable that the refurbished truck is like new, as it states from the company, it's gonna be Fire Trucks Unlimited?
Yes.
So, I mean, I went through the scope of work and it looks like it's just a frame-off restoration, and almost everything gets replaced or gets replaced with rebuilt.
Mm-hmm.
So, the chief and everybody else right down the line, everybody's comfortable with the quality of these?
I had many discussions with the chief and the, the B.C.s about this, and yes, they were all happy with what they saw.
Okay. Thank you.
So far, Stacy, go.
Yeah, just a couple of things just to add. I, I have, I have dealt with Fire Trucks Unlimited before on a rebuild when I was with the city. They're a Nevada-based company, quality operation, they're based out of Henderson. They do very good work. They're meticulous about what they do and, and they do a good job. And to your point, Brad, about these brush trucks, the newer brush trucks, the model brush trucks that the city has now are sort of tried and true workhorses that have been around for years. They were actually invented by CalFire in California, and they just really hold up well. They're workhorses in the fire service. The newer vehicles, the newer brush trucks have complicated exhaust systems, they have higher chassis, they are not as low to the ground. And so, I, I mean, if I were still there, I would wanna do exactly what you're doing and rebuild them, just because it, it's a, I think it's a better product than going out and getting something new that's actually not as functional. At some point, it's gonna have to happen, but it's just the way the new equipment is, the chassis are just so much bigger that it, it's, it's actually more difficult to function off of.
Brad?
Yeah, that, that brings up an interesting question. So, on the rebuild, you get a 10-year estimated useful life on the brush truck on the rebuild. At the end of that 10 years, can you then do another rebuild?
Well, I think Rich has to answer that, but I mean, I, it just depends. I, I think it's a possibility. Generally, you don't do two rebuilds, because you start to run into frame issues and that's usually what happens. But I mean, I think in 10 years, that's something that they could certainly evaluate. But I don't know what the industry's gonna look like in 10 years either. Could, they, they could correct some of those chassis issues and, and, you know, maybe by then, the newer stuff is a little bit better.
One of the biggest points about that is, if we refurbished it in another 10 years, we start losing manufacturer support for replacement components, including pump parts, chassis parts, engine parts, that, that starts going away at that time. So, at that point, one refurb is good enough.
Okay. Other questions of Rich or Carol? All right, let's take up item number 11 Bravo first. We'll take a motion on 11 Bravo, then we'll take up 11 Charlie on another motion.
Okay. On 11B, I move to award the con, move to award contract 19300124 is presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Thank you. Okay, that one's done. Let's take up Charlie, wants to make a motion on this one.
I got it. I move to award contract 19300123 is presented.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried.
Stacy.
Stacy said seconded, yeah. Posed the second, right. Okay, and it passed unanimous, okay. All right, let's take up 11 Delta. This is Garden Shop Nursery. Carol? Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
All right, last one of the day for me. This is the discussion and possible action regarding a determination that Garden Shop Nursery Landscape Division, Inc. is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder pursuant to NRS Chapter 338, and whether to award the contract number 20300050 for the John Mankus and Ronald D. Wilson Playground Surface Rehabilitation Project to Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division, Inc. for a total amount not to exceed $496,435. This is budgeted. This also includes a 10% contingency.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir. Go. Good morning.
Good morning.
Nick Wentworth, Parks Project Manager.
How you doing, Nick?
Push.
There you go.
Morning. Nick Wentworth, Parks Project Manager.
Good. You got anything to add?
So, we, you know, this is going to do a lot for us to remove the bark and put soft fall tile across both playground surfaces, lowering maintenance. The tile has an approximate 15-year lifespan. This helps us keep it within safety compliance and also lowers liabilities for the city, keeping it right there, making it safe for kids. It's, also lowers our maintenance and sending guys there on a weekly basis to straighten the bark out, put it back in place. It's blowing into the planters and the lawn and everything else.
Questions of Nick?
Just a question.
Supervisor Bagwell, I'm sorry.
So, does this contract somewhat then mirror what is at Roscoe Park for the, for the grounds?
Yes, it's the exact same material. We're sticking with the same materials at all the playgrounds. Schultz Ranch has the same. Both of these will be the same, so that'll make four playgrounds that have the same tile. That way, when we keep a stockpile of the spare tiles and it's in need of maintenance or anything like that, it's easy for our staff or to contract it out, and we already have the materials.
And so, you found it to be successful at those two parks? We have enough time in to know that it's a good quality and it's working out?
Yes. No complaints so far. It's, it's easy, it's carefree, I guess, you could say, that we're not out there managing where the bark's at today because the wind blew yesterday and.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I know you got your boss sitting back there, but let me ask you, how you doing? How's, how's your, you and your troops doing in the COVID stuff and everything else going on?
Scraping by. We're, you know, with no inmate labor force, we're doing exactly just whatever we can do, mowing lawns and emptying trashcans, and that's, it's hard to find the time to go out and do this extra stuff, like manipulate, moving the bark around and kind of the extra cleanup work in the different neighborhoods and parks that we normally have time to do. We're struggling to get to some of those. It's more of a reactive versus proactive.
Good, it's a good answer, it's what I probably expected to do, and thanks for, you know, putting any extra effort there, because we all know it's, it's difficult there.
Thank you.
All right. Questions, Supervisor Bagwell?
That brought something up. So, playgrounds themselves are still closed, is that correct? Right? So, they're in the park, but they can't be on the playground?
Yes.
Apparatus? Okay. Thank you.
That's good clarification. Thank you. All right. Any other questions? Nick or Carol? All right, let's try a motion.
I move to award the contract as presented, number 2030050.
There's a motion and a second by Supervisor Barrett on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed nay, carried. Unanimous. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks to the Parks folks. Keep at it.
You mayor and board, mayor-elect.
All right, let's take up another Parks issue. Let's take up item 12 Alpha. This is the Schultz Ranch LMD Landscape Maintenance District. What happened to your, there's your beard.
Beard. Here the beard.
There's my beard.
Looks better today than it did when you had it hanging down around your belt, but that's all right.
I don't know if it was that long, but thank you, Mayor. I did get it trimmed and I've been noticing that I can get it looking nicely, looking nice in the morning, but the minute I put masks on, I start getting lines through it and waves in it and everything else.
It fits you, Todd. Don't worry, I'm just teasing you. All right. All right, who's got this one? Who's gonna do it? Jennifer?
Mr. Mayor, Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. I don't know if I can follow up that comedy act, but.
We're not gonna ask you if you have a beard, so go ahead.
I hope not. Well, it's so nice to see everyone in person. It's a nice treat, so thanks for having us. Just to get right into it, the board approved tentative subdivision map, TSN 19124, to create 29 single-family lots within the Schultz Ranch specific plan area. Condition 32 of the notice of decision provides that, based on a voluntary offer of the applicant, the applicant shall seek to amend the Schultz Ranch Landscape Maintenance District to Phase Five, also known as the LMD, as we refer to it. And this item, if approved, would satisfy that condition. Adding additional lots into the LMD would delay or slightly lower the proposed annual assessment as compared to the original financial plan. And compliant with the municipal code, a packet with a notice of public hearing has been sent to all the property owners within the LMD. I do have a handout if we, we need it for clarification. The district attorney's office did ask me to put a few things on the record. We had a couple edits within the packet, and I just wanted to read those really quick. To Attachment Five Exhibit E, the maintenance plan, 75 hours was changed to 72 hours. Attachment Five Exhibit H, attachment schedule under LMD improvements, first sell Phase One and Two was changed to current. Attachment Five Exhibit H, assessment schedule under maintenance costs, $266,137.68 was changed to $226,137.68. I think Supervisor Bagwell had caught that for us, so thank you. And then to Attachment Five Exhibit H, assessment schedule under Note Five, timer period should be changed to time period. And then the district attorney's office is recommending revision to Note Two on Exhibit H, just to read the following. So, since the initial formation of the LMD, the build-out has occurred faster than originally planned, while the maintenance costs have been slow to ramp up. This has resulted in a large revenue surplus for the LMD, approximately $194,703.91. Although full build-out is estimated to be completed in 2023, and at that time, the LMD's share of annual maintenance costs is estimated to be $165,283.52. The annual assessment is purposely ramped up slowly over the course of several years to generate less than $165,283.52 for the LMD, so the LMD's account surplus can be reduced to approximately $50,000. Todd Reese is here with me. He prepared some of the documents before you, if there's questions. And then we have Manhart Consulting representing the applicant on the line as well, if that's working.
I've got a couple of questions up here. First Supervisor Bonkowski, then Supervisor Bagwell.
Jen, you said that the assessments could be delayed or lowered. I don't understand how they can be delayed, because aren't the assessments part of the property tax bill?
They are correct, so it really lowers. Todd came up with that wording, so I don't know if you want clarification on that.
Okay. I don't see how it's possible to delay them, because they come out when the property tax bills come out.
The, you're correct. The, the property owners are billed when the, when the property taxes go out. However, according to Exhibit H, the schedule of assessments that was provided to you, the schedule of assessments for each year, the assessments are ramped up slowly.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, we, we reach full build-out at 2023, and at that point, we're slowly ramping up at a $285 a year assessment, instead of the full build-out assessment of $364.76.
Okay, so it's the increases that would be delayed, not the actual billings?
Correct.
Got it? Okay. All right, thank you.
Lori?
I just wanted to put on the record for anyone that was there, when we originally did the Landscape Maintenance District, Brad and I worked, I can't, I don't remember how many hours, but too many, that we've actually changed the modeling. It hasn't, that, the slight decrease at the end of the term is also because we went to contract instead of staff doing the work at the, so we eliminated a truck. We, we did some small changes, but it is the way we've implemented the Landscape Maintenance District at Schultz Ranch from the beginning, but this change aligns that with the actual activity. So, I just wanted to put that on the record, that we're doing it via contract, not city staff. Is that correct?
Correct. Mayor-elect Jennifer Budge, Parks and Recreation Director. So, on Exhibit G is where you'll see that change. It was anticipated, and, you know, when you do a plan for anything, you're just trying to do your best guess of what you think might be reasonable. And we, we looked at the true cost. It was really more cost-effective for us to contract out the maintenance, especially with how the improvements were coming on. You'd get one little tiny strip of landscape, and then you'd get another little one, and it just slowly came up, so it was so much easier to use some of our landscape contractors to be able to do it. They're really responsive. We do go out to bid every year to make sure we're getting the best price for the product, especially now that we're having more. But we did make that change, and we have the option. So, in Phase Three, it says maintenance and repair contract, LMD admin, janitorial services, and/or city staff maintenance or repair labor. So, we can change that moving forward if we think that contract procedure is just not working for us. So, it does give us the flexibility, but I wanted to be really transparent about what was happening on the ground, which is why you have that edit in that exhibit.
Brad, go.
Lori's comments reminded me of something that I wanted to go through with you, Jen. As Lori mentioned, we spent a lot of time on the, the Landscape Maintenance District, coming up with all the legal documents to be able to create it, implement it. This is the first time that we had done an LMD. And then we got away from that, and now we're doing, we're putting the onus on the HOAs for the maintenance or deed restrictions. Can, can you kind of bring us up to speed on why, after spending so much time trying to create something, which at that time was the, the shiniest, newest, best thing out there? Why we got away from it?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Supervisor Bonkowski. So, to give a little overview, the LMD is currently set up, provides a 70/30 split, so the city contributes 30% of the cost for the maintenance. And that's great in concept. As we've had these new developments, we've tried to move to where the new subdivision would pay 100% of the cost of the new improvement occurred. So, when we've had Lompah Ranch East and West, we've had Anderson Ranch move forward, we've moved in that concept. Having an LMD, I think, is a great option. It does provide a sustainable funding source, but it essentially makes the city like an HOA. So, every time there's a little problem, you have a lot of people calling us. When, if we had a maintenance association or a homeowners' association, a lot of that could be managed without having to involve the city. We, they could still be public improvements, we could still have Park Rangers patrolling, still working with the public, but it kind of puts us in that position. So, I think it's great to have the option of a maintenance association, and then we've put in all of the conditions of approval for those three subdivisions that I talked about. The LMD is a backup plan at 100%. And then I know both of you have provided a lot of comments, even though we worked so hard to get that LMD established, there were a lot of things that wanted to see changed. So, I have submitted all of those changes to the DA's office. I'm not sure where we are in the queue to update the LMD ordinance, because we do wanna update that with 100% and all of the other edits, but I have provided that. I know there have, they have a huge task ahead of them to update the entire code, so I'm not exactly sure where we are in the, in the queue for that, but I have provided both of your comments on those edits to the DA's office as well. So, we'll continue to make it a really good ordinance to have, but I also like to have that maintenance association option, because it's a best practice in other regions that are working really well.
The reason that I bring that up is because, you know, we do, between the five of us up here and staff, we spend a lot of time trying to analyze issues and come up with appropriate solutions. I think most of the time, we get it right, but occasionally, you know, we have a really great idea that doesn't work out so well, and I think it's important that the public know that when that happens, that, you know, we stay on top of the issue and we make corrections, and we will change course when required. So, you know, we're not operating in a vacuum up here. You know, if we do something that doesn't work out as we intended, we are aware of it, we do correct it and try to get back on track.
Anybody else?
Just a general comment. I think we have time not to put the LMD to the top of the list for priorities. However, I do think we need to get the ordinance updated, because it is our backup plan for any project failures. And so, I don't want it to go by the wayside. It is a good product, and it is what would be necessary if we had an HOA failure. And not that I'm dreaming that any of them will happen, but that does happen. So, I don't want it to be, to, to get lost, and I know, again, how much work Brad and I put into that project, and I would hate for all of our edit work to get lost in the translation, so I just, for what that's worth.
Everybody understand that one? Everybody understand that one? Todd, you understand?
Yes, Mayor, I understand.
We do have the applicant on the line if there's any questions for them as well, or if they-
Who's on the line?
We have Chris Baker, and I think Karen Downs from Manhart Consulting.
Anybody on the line want to weigh in here?
We're here. We're here. I don't have anything to add to that, but if you have any specific questions, we can answer on Phase 5 particularly.
Very good. Okay. Where are you talking from? Where are you?
In Reno, in our conference room.
Well, we got good video. We got good audio. That's good.
Oh, good. That's good to know.
Wish it was the colorway around. All right. Any other questions? Motion's in order. Hate to ask either Brad or Laurie to do it, but let's give it a shot.
I got it. I move to approve the amendment to Schultz Ranch Landscape Maintenance District.
Being the corrections read into the record by Ms. Budge.
Yes, including the noted corrections and including the staff direction to complete the ordinance at some point in the somewhat near future.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Here against, none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay, carried. Thank you. Thanks for being on the line, too. Let's, okay, let's go to 12 Bravo. This is Snipla. Lindsay, how you doing today? How's our open space doing?
Doing great.
So, good morning. For the record, Open Space Manager, Lindsay Boyer. We're here this morning to discuss two nominations to the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, or SNPLMA grant. So our department is seeking authorization to submit two grant applications to Round 18 of the SNPLMA grant program, which is administered by the Bureau of Land Management, or the BLM. So these two grant applications total $4,433,123, and we're requesting a $50,000 cash match, which would be applied to the Buzzies Ranch Wetland Enhancement Project specifically. So funding hasn't been finalized for the grant program this year, but they're anticipating $200 million will be available. Carson City is eligible under two categories, the fuels category, as well as the parks, trails, and natural areas. And both of these grant nominations are under the parks, trails, and natural areas. And nominations are due September 14th. So I'd like to note that there were some late materials that were submitted with this staff report, which included some revised cost estimates, as well as some updated maps for the Trails Project. We've been coordinating pretty closely with the BLM on this grant project and getting some guidance from them. And so as a result from that guidance, we had some revisions to the cost estimate, which I'll outline. And we were also waiting to receive some quotes and engineered estimates, which weren't available when we first submitted these materials for the board meeting. So that's what led to some of those additional cost estimate revisions. So I'm going to talk about the first grant nomination, the Buzzies Ranch Wetland Enhancement Project. And then Greg Berger, our Trails Coordinator, he'll be discussing the Carson River Trails Project Phase 3. So project nomination number one is for the Buzzies Ranch Wetland Enhancement Project. The grant funding request for this particular project is $1,831,538. And again, we're requesting that $50,000 cash match to be applied to the project. And the $50,000 cash match is currently budgeted. It was actually to be previously allocated to the current SNPLMA grant that we are operating under right now for the Carson River Trails Project Phase 2, which is under construction. But due to the way that the bids came back, that match wasn't actually required. So it was unallocated, and so we're just going to kind of move that over and allocate it to this particular project. So the Buzzies Ranch Wetland Enhancement Project seeks to purchase 154.3 acres or 694.35 acre-feet annually of water rights, which are currently permitted by Vidler Water Company on Buzzies Ranch, but we're seeking to purchase and apply them permanently. And they would be applied to the middle portion of Buzzies Ranch, which includes approximately 36 acres that comprise the NDOT mitigation wetlands, which are located in the southwestern portion of the property adjacent to Carson River Road, as well as approximately 112 acres, which are just to the north of that parcel, which is the site of the Ducks Unlimited Wetland Enhancement Project, which was completed on the property in 2016. And Vidler Water Company is a willing seller, and they have provided a letter to this effect, which will include in our grant application, essentially saying that they are a willing seller, just pending completion of a water rights appraisal, which would be completed after the funding is awarded. But we do have a pretty good ballpark of costs that was provided to us by-
Who was the seller again, please?
Vidler Water Company. So when we first were discussing this project with SNPLMA staff, they had noted the agricultural lands themselves were not eligible under the parks, trails, and natural areas category, because originally, we were just seeking water rights to apply to the property as a whole. But once we received that guidance, and we let them know that there are some wetlands present on the property and some previous enhancement projects that were completed there, they said that, you know, applying the water to those wetlands would be more than eligible under their criteria. So we're seeking to purchase these water rights to develop a more permanent wetland system out there. Right now, it's a bit of an ephemeral wetland system, just due to water availability. So these wetlands provide critical habitat to waterfowl, shorebirds, and migratory birds as they make their way down through North America. They kind of key in on the wetlands and the flooded pastures as kind of a stopover location, as they make their way to breeding grounds elsewhere within the country, as well as down through the watershed, making their way to Stillwater, which is a wildlife refuge. So acquisition of these permanent and dedicated water rights is critical to maintaining these important wetlands, as well as the goals and objectives of the Ducks Unlimited Project that was completed in 2016, which was really about doing some improvements out there to get better pasture management, as well as to provide that spring and summer wetland habitat for the birds. In addition to water rights acquisition, we're also seeking monies for irrigation repair. There's some failing irrigation out there that brings water to the wetlands, so we want to update that. We'd also be including some money for revegetation and weed abatement out there, just to further enhance what's currently existing. And we're proposing some interpretive signage to be installed along the Mexican ditch, which would help teach folks about these wetlands and their importance in our community. You may have noted in the staff report, originally, a trail and viewing platform was discussed, but after receiving guidance from the BLM, they recommended that we include that portion in a future phase of the project, rather than rolling it into this one. So that was another reason the cost estimates were revised. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions related to this project before I turn it over to Greg.
Jump in there. Brad, then Laurie, go.
All right.
Was it you, or you got one, too, Chief?
Okay.
My lights are kind of- Lindsay, let's start with the 694.36 acre-feet. That's the water that Vidler purchased from the Anderson family?
That's a great question. I believe this is actually water that's been piecemealed throughout the watershed. So it's kind of a compilation of several different water rights that were originally, I think, allocated upstream. The Vidler brought together to put together on Buzzies Ranch specifically. So I don't believe it was purchased or connected to the Anderson family.
Okay. So that would answer my next question, which is, why would we be required to do a cultural survey of the water is, the water that's always been on the ranch?
The cultural survey is actually related to some of the irrigation improvements that we need to do. Those would be located on the NDOT mitigation wetlands, which are located to the south. And that parcel actually came to us during the land exchange with the BLM, the Opplima Land Exchange. And so that comes with some covenants, including the Conservation easement and the programmatic agreement with the State Historic Preservation Office, which requires us to do Section 106 review if we do any ground disturbing activities. So to replace those culverts, there will be some ground disturbing activities.
So the 695 acre-feet, was that calculated as the need just for the wetlands enhancement?
It's essentially what is currently allocated or permitted by Vidler. It's kind of a whole chunk. And so they're willing to sell that whole chunk, but it ends up calculating almost perfectly to apply to the three parcels that I mentioned.
Just for the wetlands enhancement and the-
And the mitigation wetlands, yes.
Right. Okay. Because my question was, how do you separate irrigation water from the wetlands mitigation water on the property, and what happens if you co-mingle that water? Is there a liability to the grant funds?
That's a great question, and we have discussed that with the BLM. And they understand that, you know, there is some co-mingling that's going to happen with irrigation water that's being drawn off the ditch and the way that the water moves through the property. But we plan on, like I said, doing some irrigation improvements so that there's more direct water coming off of the Mexican ditch directly into those wetlands, so we can try to separate it out a little bit. And there's also the potential to add, you know, a water meter or something like that, so we can better regulate what's being directed to those wetlands specifically.
Thank you.
Chief, Supervisor Stacy?
Brad got my last question there, so I appreciate that clarification. On the, why did they have you pull out the dock or the interpretive trail or whatever you called it, sorry? Why did they ask you to pull that out?
The boardwalk and the trail. I think from their perspective, I mean, this is a fairly large ask, you know, 1.8 million. The average cost of projects that they fund is right around that level. If we were to add in a trail and a boardwalk, you know, that certainly would increase costs dramatically. And I think there's some improvements that would really be nice to make to those wetlands before we go ahead and put in the trail and the boardwalk, specifically enhancing that vegetation so that it's a really beautiful site, and then putting in that trail. So I think perhaps it's just a little bit of a cart before the horse type thing.
So conceivably, in a future round, you'd do more than just a boardwalk. You would do some enhancement with vegetation and maybe a few of the things that would make it more attractive and a better chance of getting it.
This particular proposal does include revegetation, so we're going to start with that. But I think that'll be a long-term, ongoing project. But yeah, we absolutely intend to apply for a future round that would include a trail or boardwalk, or a trail to a boardwalk, rather.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody? Ready for motion?
Yeah, we got the other project.
Right. Okay, go.
Okay. Good morning. Greg Berger, Trails Coordinator with Parks, Recreation, and Open Space.
How you doing, Greg?
Good. How are you, Mayor?
Doing all right.
Good. Okay, so a little bit of background on this particular project. This would be Phase 3 in a multi-phase project in the Carson River Silver Saddle Ranch, Prison Hill area. Phase 1 of this, the Phase 1 SNPLMA grant constructed the Eagle Creek Bridge, which connected Riverview Park with the Empire Ranch Trail. Phase 2, which is currently under construction, connects the new Fishtree Trailhead with Silver Saddle Ranch, and then it connects Carson River Park with Riverview Park. And as most projects in Carson City, this one will be completed by Nevada Day. And so we're hoping to have some kind of a socially-distanced grant opening when it is complete, and we're pretty excited about this one. So Phase 3, as currently proposed, will construct a non-motorized, multi-use trail with a compacted, decomposed granite surface totaling about 2.5 miles in length along the west side of Prison Hill, connecting three trailheads, and completing another segment of a planned loop trail around Prison Hill. It will make needed improvements to the Coons Lane Trailhead and improve the safety for pedestrians, bicyclers, equestrians who cross Edmund's Drive to access Prison Hill. The project will continue our ongoing effort to create a network of trails that connect neighborhoods to parks and open space in the Carson River, Prison Hill area, enhance recreational opportunities for families and those with mobility challenges, provide a link to other trail systems within Carson City, and improve visitor safety while minimizing disturbance to natural areas and wildlife habitats. So the project is supported by a number of previous planning efforts that go back to 1995, beginning with the Eagle Valley Trail System Report, 1995, which proposed a trail to circumnavigate Prison Hill. The Carson River Master Plan, 1996, which established goals for, or recreational goals for trails in the Carson River area. The Unified Pathways Master Plan, 2006, which calls for a trail encircling Prison Hill. The Sharet, Creating a Community Vision, Silver Saddle Ranch and the Carson River, 2008, that summarized the need for a multi-use trail system in that area and including Prison Hill and along Carson River. And the management plan for Carson City Open Space Parks in the Carson River area makes recommendations for trail connections and trailhead improvements. Lastly, the Eagle Valley Trails Committee Report, the Community Trail Inventory Review Evaluation and User Needs Assessment Report, 2017. That report was incorporated into a 2018 update of our Unified Pathways Master Plan, and that also identifies the desire for a trail around Prison Hill. Additionally, our department last summer conducted a Prison Hill Master Plan online survey, which had about 190 responses. And we also held an open house in January with about 100 attendees. And we learned a couple of things from that public outreach. One is that the Coons Lane Trailhead is the most popular trailhead on Prison Hill. And we learned that there's a need for improvements to the Coons Lane Trailhead to include the improvements to the access road, additional parking, and safety and sanitation enhancements. And if you look at the map, there's kind of, it says Coons Lane Trailhead detail that was included in your packet. It shows some of the proposals for that area, which include enlarging that parking lot to accommodate about 20 to 30 vehicles and two to three horse traders. We want to fix the existing drainage problems on the access road and the parking lot itself. We want to add two ADA-compliant parking spaces and a vault toilet, picnic table with a shelter. Now, all that would be ADA-compliant. And then fencing to, around the parking area to keep people from driving on the brush. We would also improve the access road and fix the drainage issues on that. And we would add a crosswalk and a rectangular rapid flashing beacon on Edmund's Drive, so where Coons Lane crosses that. And I want to mention that that, the improvements to the crossing of Edmund's are supported by Public Works. Our plan is based on their recommendations, and we have a letter of support from Lucian Maloney, the Transportation Manager for our project. And then, of course, the trail itself would extend about two and a half miles from the Coons Lane Trailhead south to the OHV area. And I wanted to address a question that Supervisor Bonkowski had asked via email earlier this week, asking about potential for user conflict with the OHV area. So our initial proposal had proposed a trail that would continue all the way through the OHV area or around the OHV area and connect to the Mexican Dam, which would virtually complete the loop trail around Prison Hill. We subsequently scaled that back a bit, and that last segment will be a future phase of our project. But I still wanted to address that. So we have, in our ongoing efforts to start managing the OHV area, we have modified the boundaries enough that staff believes that we could get a non-motorized trail around the OHV area with minimal contacts to the OHV area. And so we believe that by incorporating signage and fencing, we could keep the two separate, and we could avoid conflicts in that area. So the revised cost breakdown for this project is about 2.6 million. And we believe that we have a very strong nomination because this project hits six of the seven SNPLMA Parks, Trails, and Natural Area strategic goals, including those of connecting people to places and the integration of previous SNPLMA projects. And with that, I will take any questions the board may have.
Anybody got questions? Greg, Supervisor Bagwell? Greg, supervisor Bagwell.
More just again to put on the record, I had received some comments from the public that were concerned that potentially we were not complying with easement requirements, deed restrictions, et cetera, but with the OHV. You don't have any concerns? I just would like it on the record that everything will comply and get the appropriate approvals, everything else.
I think you may be referring to the programmatic agreement and the requirement for Section 106 of the Cultural, or for the National Historic Preservation Act. And so we have conducted a cultural survey for the South End of Prison Hill, which was completed and submitted to the State Historic Preservation Office. And for this particular project, or for this current nomination, which will include, of course, everything from the Coons Lane Trailhead south, we will also, as the first part of this project, conduct those cultural surveys.
Any other questions, Greg? Chief.
Greg, so on the, before you submitted the late material, are all of the changes at the Coons Lane Trailhead, were they originally included? Or did you change it to the extent where you decided to do, focus your money there and not complete the loop at the south end?
We, all of the, everything, yeah, we didn't make any changes to our proposal for the Coons Lane Trailhead. I just added the, that additional map to clarify exactly what we're doing there.
Okay, so it was always part of the plan, it just wasn't shown on the?
Correct.
First document we got.
Yes.
When I looked at the first document, it looked like you were doing the entire loop. So that's now what you've removed?
Yes, so the initial, the initial proposal was for about 4.7 miles of trail, but due to the, when we got the engineer's estimate of cost, we decided to scale that back. And so now we're proposing 2.5 miles of trail.
And so it's a cost-based decision?
It's a cost-based decision, and so we will continue our efforts to make the connection in future phases.
I just want to bring that up. We brought it up here at a previous meeting that Carson River Sub Conservancy District is working on the aquatic trail to make improvements to the path at Mexican Dam. And so, you know, it would have been nice to have those work together. So I mean, I'm sure you realize that, but I would encourage you to work with Ed on ways we can, you know, make sure that those connect because it just, it just makes sense. I mean, I know the aquatic trail is a put-in-and-take-out point, but they're also creating a ditch around the dam to allow boaters to be able to, you know, pull out, walk their boat around the dam, and then enter back in. And so does this connection point cover any of that, or that would be a future, the future component?
So, yeah, I can address a lot of that. So the current project is our project, and it was partially funded by the Carson River Sub Conservancy District to construct a bridge across the Mexican Dam intake. The previous structure was really insufficient, it wasn't equestrian-friendly, and it was very, very old. So we have a new structure out there now, and so that's a piece of the puzzle. We also have, right where the, where you cross the Mexican ditch and head south, the trail is very, very narrow, and there's a steep, decomposing granite hillside there. So that needs to be addressed. Muscle-powered, our volunteer organization is going to tackle that this fall to widen that trail a bit. So we will be able to make some connectivity around that part of the hill. We, I mean, again, for the, with a future phase of the project, we would, we would like to make that a much more accessible trail, making it, you know, a wider trail with decomposed granite. But at least for now, this year, we should be able to get some accessibility just by widening that, that one little segment. I think it's about 150 feet or something.
Great. And then one final question for me. On the, on the trailhead, is that the area that you're showing, the trailhead itself? So you're talking about making improvements from the end of the red line, the end of the multi-use trail that you're doing, from there down to the freeway multi-use path, correct? That whole area would be improved? Or at least?
So.
So that it weren't?
I, what, well, with this particular proposal, we would be improving the connection from Coons Lane up to the trailhead. And the Coons Lane, we wouldn't actually be making improvements to Coons Lane itself.
You know, I didn't mean that. I meant the off-road component from Edmunds up to the point where the new multi-use path starts.
Oh, yes, yeah, that would be, that would be the connection. So it would go from the Coons Lane Trailhead, it would connect the Clearview Trailhead, and then go down to the Golden Eagle Lane Trailhead near the south end of Prison Hill, which is, which is where, which is also the entrance to the OHV area.
Again, I'm asking about from this point to this point, and it sounds like you're saying yes.
Okay, so, okay, again, yeah, that's what I was, I guess what I was referring to initially. So from, from, what you're looking at is Coons Lane?
Yeah, I'm talking about from the end of your red line on which you provided us?
Right.
To Coons Lane.
Yes, so that would be?
The hunk there is getting?
That would be, yes, that would be upgraded.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and that's, we do, we have had a lot of public comments regarding that particular road.
That's what I wanted to hear you say.
Okay.
So thank you. And thanks to, these are both great projects. They're great projects for a lot of reasons. We don't have to pay for it. They connect our trail system, which I'm a big fan of, and I know a lot of people in the community are, and they preserve our wetlands and historic components of, you know, Buzzzy's Ranch and, or, excuse me, the Anderson Ranch. And so kudos to all of you for applying for this, thank you.
Thank you all.
Joe.
Greg, Stacy got most of my questions, but a couple of follow-ups. When would you anticipate the future phase trail, which would go from the Golden Eagle Trailhead over to the Mexican Dam? When would you be applying for that or looking to build that section? And my second question is, are you anticipating a future phase from the Coons Trailhead, Coons Lane Trailhead, up to Fairview Drive, which would then complete the entire loop?
Okay, so in answer to the first question, the Snipoma grants come up periodically, maybe every couple of years. So if we're successful with this nomination, then hopefully we would be applying for the next phase in a couple of years. And then with regard to the second question, connecting Coons to Fairview, yes, that is a proposed future phase as well. We've, there's different ways to do that. If we stayed on Prison Hill itself, we do encounter some very, very steep terrain, and it's right above some homes. So that's one consideration that would need to be looked at. The other possibility would be to find a route using surface streets from Coons to connect into Fairview. But yes, we do, we do plan to make that connection somehow in the future. Does that answer the question?
It does. And then one final question, are there any planned improvements from the Coons Lane Trailhead over the top to Dead Truck Trail coming down the other side? Because that's a direct route up, up the mountain, through the pass, down the other side to Silver Saddle Ranch.
Correct. So we do have plans for some realignments and some improvements and some new trails. I just, we're talking single-track trails in and around and over Prison Hill. Those are in the works. We do need to complete Section 106 cultural surveys before we can, we can begin those projects. And then we need to look at, you know, either funding or using volunteer hand crews for those kinds of projects. But yeah, there are, there are plans for making improvements to the entire trail system on Prison Hill.
Sorry.
John. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great questions, colleagues, and great presentation. This is, as Stacy said, wonderful project, and keep working at it to complete it.
Amen. Any other questions? Anybody? Greg, thanks for all the work you do out there on the trails.
No, thank you, appreciate that.
I didn't recognize you there without your hat and your trail gear on.
I don't usually wear this kind of shirt, huh?
That's, it's all right, it's all right. This is, this is good stuff. Okay, any other questions? Okay, now we can do a motion for both projects.
I got it. I move to authorize the supplemental of both grant applications as discussed.
There's a motion and a second by Supervisor Bronkowski on the motion discussion. Hearing not all in favor, six of them, I say, yeah, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, carried, unanimous. Okay, let's stay in place for a minute. Do we have, do we have your? John, did you get your?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, staff, thank you. We feel, both of us feel safe now.
So he can take his mask off if he wants to. All right. Let's keep going here. If anybody has to, if somebody wants to take a break, we'll take a break, but let's try and get through to 10:30 or something like that. Okay, let's take up Marlet.
How you doing? Good morning, I'm doing well, how are you?
All right.
Eddie Qualiary, for the record, Water Utility Manager. We have before you today a memorandum of understanding, and this is a start towards a final agreement between Carson, Story, Tamwa, and the State of Nevada on how to best operate the Marlet Lake Water System in order to maximize the water resources and minimize the cost for all. That's the intent. This MOU is a starting point basically for future negotiations and to lay out the basic framework on which to build a long-term agreement. I wanted to update you on current status of where everything is at behind the scenes of this MOU. Story and Carson City are both working on their demands for their current and future demands from the Marlet Lake Water System that's in progress. That'll help determine this surplus water idea on the water that would be available for Tamwa. The state is also working on, State of Nevada, who owns the system, is also working on a master plan for the system. And then after that is done, a rate study would be performed, and that'll help figure out the true cost that we'd all share. I want to note that Tamwa's on the line for any questions, John Zimmerman with Tamwa. And also want to note that this MOU has been approved by Tamwa's board on the 19th of August, and then Story's board just on this past Tuesday. So with that, I would open it up for your questions.
Brad, Supervisor Bronkowski.
Eddie, you mentioned the rate study that would be done. Have you had any preliminary conversations about the rate study and what will be included? My concern being, in that rate study, are they going to include any CIP investments made by Carson City or potentially Story County to the system?
So they, the state embarked on a rate study, and we all told them it'd be best to hold off on that study before, and do a master plan first, because they were going to do a rate study with what they have now. So we looked, we told them to, well, we, we told them that they should probably wait and do a master plan first and then see what that comes out at. So I assume that it would have taken account all the things we've paid for as well, and any improvements that would benefit us in the future.
And I have to say that, reading through this, it concerns me when I read an agreement that reiterates the same fact like 20 times, that fact being that Carson City and Story County need to protect their current and future water needs first and foremost, and that's literally reiterated at least a dozen times in this agreement. And when I read that, reading between the lines, there's got to be a reason for it. That reason, I suppose, is that we now have a new player at the table who wants to share in some of this water, being Tamwa. So I suppose that this should be comforting, and I read the agreement, I don't have a problem with the agreement, it's the concept behind the agreement that I have concerns over. So what would you tell me to make me feel better about this agreement after the statement that I just made?
I would tell?
You could tell the supervisor, Supervisor Bronkowski that I screamed 3,000 acre feet every time I turn around.
Or maybe this is something that, you know, Tamwa should have an opportunity to address as well as you, you know? I mean, I don't know, but it concerns me when I see this much effort put into an agreement to protect something that we already have.
Well, it's a, again, a starting place to get everyone at the table so that we all feel comfortable with everyone's position, past and current and future, so that we can go forward with a final agreement. And this has been in progress for a couple of years now, so all that time has led up to this, and it's a place to start again on looking at the system and making the use of it, making the most of it. Feeling any better? No?
I don't know. How do you make people feel better? But clarity, clarity is the, what is that phrase? Clarity is?
Brevity is the soul of clarity.
Brevity is the soul of clarity.
Which doesn't apply here, apparently.
Whatever. It doesn't bother me personally, I understand what you're saying, Brad, but it doesn't bother me to reiterate until the cows come home. But? Anybody? Stacy?
Yeah. Yeah, perhaps it's the information that Brad and I get from being on the Water Sub Conservancy District, but I have a little bit of discomfort as well. But I kind of want to explore the, and I asked several questions, would you guys answer? And I appreciate your answers and am comfortable with those. But, but one of them was kind of mulled around in my head as you talked about the rate study and the capital improvements that the city has spent money on in the system benefit everybody in the system, not just Carson. So tell me how going forward, if Tamwa needs to make system improvements that only pertain to excess water, are you comfortable saying that that cost would only be borne by the end-user, meaning Tamwa, or would it be borne by the entire system? Because I know one of the ideas is we're sharing cost, and it may drive the cost of water down. You know, given how little excess water there is, I don't know if that's really going to materialize, but, but I get the concept. But, so I'll stop there and see what you have to say.
Well, it's true that, you know, to get the water to, it's already going to Lake Tahoe on that side of the system, and it's already spilling into Washoe Lake on the other side. So in concept, I agree, it would be a cheaper source for Tamwa, right? Just in the terms of infrastructure involved in that. There would be quite a bit of modeling that would have to go into this operationally that would be, in my mind, borne by Tamwa in order to figure out what that surplus water is. Because it's going to be, it's going to be almost on a daily basis, figuring out snowpack, figuring out what's available, what will spill. So I don't want to get into that too much, I can let Tamwa talk about that side of things. But there is expenses involved. In my mind, we'd be operating essentially in normal for our side, taking what we need, satisfying our demands, and paying our costs. But hopefully the cost of the actual water, since we're selling more of it, or the state's selling more of it, our cost for the water would go down.
So your sense is that the, whatever extra cost, because as you explained to me, Tamwa's access to that water is essentially through already existing bodies of water, right? I mean, I'm oversimplifying it, but, but essentially they'll, they'll trade off water that goes into Lake Tahoe and water that goes into Washoe Lake or into that drainage. And any future improvements they made, which, as Darren said, that really do involve capital expenditures, more than just water running downhill, would be borne then by them, not by the system. Is that a first?
Correct. Yep.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Tamwa's on the line, who's on the line, Eddie?
It's John Zimmerman.
Hey, John, do you want to add any? Hey, John, do you want to add anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. John Zimmerman, for the record, the water resources manager with Trekkie Meadows Water Authority. I think your comments regarding the repetitive nature of the agreement, Tamwa recognizes, and I think all the parties recognize, that we have to ensure that any surplus water that Tamwa uses does not take, you know, does not take away from Carson City and Story County's current and future planned uses. And regarding the comment about paying for any system improvements, I think Tamwa's prepared to pay our fair share as far as what improvements we need in order to make use of this surplus water. Again, our position is that there's some surplus water coming out of this system and that we ought to make the most beneficial use out of it that we can. And part of this agreement is putting together the details that will dictate how we get to use that water. And so I thank you for your time and appreciate, Mr. Mayor, and Tamwa's consultant Leo Drauzdoff getting the parties together to work on this MOU. It's the start of a collaborative process and, of course, any future agreement will be brought back before all three parties' boards for review and approval. Thank you.
Very good. Any questions to John Zimmerman? Anybody? My two cents is that this is a great step forward. I mean, because it solves technical issues, solves political issues. And yeah, it's not the end of, it's not, it doesn't complete the cycle for a long-term contract, but it puts us in a position where we all know where we stand going into this. And we didn't have that before this agreement came up. So I intend to vote for this, and I'll vote for it three or four times to make up for all the times at Story County and Carson City are mentioned. All right.
Can I ask one more question, Mayor?
Can we do that in the election, too?
And this is a starting point, right? I mean, this is the beginning of a framework. So we will have opportunities to, as you suss out the details and some of the things that we brought up to you here, either in the email that I sent you or the discussion here, we'll be able to pin those down a little bit better and hopefully ally some of the concerns that at least I know I have and I think Brad probably has. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. There's a lot of details to work out.
And in the meantime, we just keep going as we're going?
Yep. We have a, we're in a two-year agreement that would end in July '21.
Right. So that's...
So it's coming up.
You're not going to be done by July of '21.
No, we will not be.
So we would need to extend that interim agreement.
Correct.
And that's what you foresee doing?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead. Supervisor Spagwell.
So do you see all this coming together during the next legislative process to look at that system? Because isn't that part of their issue, too, for the state is to recover and meet the needs for their budgeting process? So I'm just wondering, is the legislature going to stay status quo for the next session? And then this will be the fruition of the joint agreements? Is that how you're seeing it play out?
Yeah. Darren Schultz, for the record, I think that the overall background that's going on right now in terms of the studies, the planning, that sort of thing, that that will eventually be brought to the legislative, the special group that kind of oversees this. The idea behind that is, before we can do a long-term agreement, whether it's just Story and Carson or Story, Carson, and Tamwa, that we need that background of really what we're dealing with. That's what we've done here in Carson City for the last few years with some of these master plans. So once that's established by the state, then, yes, I would expect them to bring that forward to the legislature and explain to them, as you know, the last two sessions, this has been really kind of a hot topic and nobody really knows what's going on. But I think their intent, I don't want to speak for them, but their intent is to take those documents forward and say, okay, this is what we have. This is what we own. Here's the, here's what we can do, what we can't do. And then kind of talk about the framework of an ongoing, sustainable agreement that keeps that group within the state whole, but also allows improvements to be made, you know, that are acceptable. For this last legislative session, they went and, you know, asked for some sizable grants to look at the dam portion of the reservoirs up there. That is something that the state is doing independently, on their own. That would never be part of an agreement that we have. So I think the master planning is more discussion of infrastructure needed to get the water, you know, from the reservoirs into our system, Story's system, and ultimately Tamwa's system. That's kind of where more of the master planning will be coming. And although that will be of interest to the legislature, it won't, it's not going to be a direct impact to their budget, so. And I do want to go on the record about some of the earlier conversations. We, Carson City has invested a lot of money in this system up there. We will ensure that if a new party comes in, Tamwa or anybody else, if they're going to use any portion of that system that we have paid for and are paying for, that they would be, they would be subject to kick into that. As discussions that we've had to date, the way they're looking at using the water or how it would benefit Tamwa, it wouldn't go through any of those systems that we currently have built up there and are paying for. But yes, we would insist, if they're using anything that we've contributed to, that they would be party to that.
Right. John, you ready?
So Darren and Eddie, I just want to make sure that my recollections are accurate on this system. Is it correct, or am I not remembering correctly, that the current amount of water that we use from the Marlet and the Franktown system are limited because of treatment issues at Quill? Is that true? And can you bring us up to date on the improvements that we're making at Quill and how that's going to affect how much water we can use? And where I'm eventually getting to is, if we can use more of the water in the system and we haven't been using it because we weren't able to treat it, are you calculating those new uses into the future uses or the current uses that we haven't been able to use because of the treatment issues?
Good questions. So currently, it's a part of our CIP for our rate study that's going, progressing right now to upgrade the Quill treatment plant to be able to treat all the water qualities that we see from our creeks to Marlet, to Marlet Lake, to Hobart Lake, to all the different sources that we can take into the plant. So to answer your first question is, yes, we'll be able to treat all of that water. We're doing, we're already starting some pilot studies to determine, you know, chemical dosing for the new system and further details like that. So that is going forward. I also want to put on the record that we have also been using, at times when we can't treat the water, we send it down the VC water basins and we have a recharge permit with the state to credit that water to our groundwater basin. So that's another use for the water. We've also have a new permit to utilize this water in our river wells for water that passes through our creeks that we don't take at Quill and that we can pump out of our river wells when the river drops off. So there's different ways that we've come up with to utilize this water in the meantime, before we have a treatment plant that where we can take it all. So I just wanted to inform you all on that. And then your second question was based on, can you repeat that one?
So once we have treatment capacity or capability, then does that affect the amount of water that we will use? And is that in current use or is that calculated into future use? Or is it not in the calculations at this time?
So we're upgrading Quill to account for the entire future uses we could get from the system. And that is based on the existing system that exists right now, not updating all the pipeline all the way up the hill.
So that's based on, on...
We could, yeah.
On infrastructure capacity, not on how much water is in the system or our ability to treat it? It's simply, this is the maximum amount of water we can get through the system into our system for use?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think that was it.
Any other questions? Anybody? Want to add anything? Eddie?
I'm good.
I would like to ask Darren if he's going to hang around through the cell to, the cell, the next items.
I didn't understand that, John. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm just asking if Darren's going to be around so I can talk to him during a break.
Okay. He's going to be around, right? All right. Let's take a motion on this, see where it goes. Anybody want to try it?
I move to approve the MOU.
Second. There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing can see none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed nay? Carried. John, thanks to your Tamwa group over there. Thanks to the state for working and with us here. Let's, I'll go forward for the benefit of all of us in this northern Nevada region. So we've crossed, we've carried a lot of timber with this bill, with this memorandum. So thanks to everybody. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I was just going to say, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
All right. Let's be in recess for five or 10 minutes here. Let's be in recess for five or 10 minutes here. Okay, we're going to bring the meeting of the board of supervisors back to order. It's been requested that we take up the small cell stuff all at once. So, let's take up, listen carefully to this. It's 13 Bravo, 13 Charlie, 13 Delta, and 13 Echo. We'll take them all up for discussion, and then we'll have a vote on each one at the end. Everybody got that one?
Mm-hmm.
All right. On the line, Marison, you on the line? I don't see anybody out there. Well, okay, I got it. Okay, go. Who's going to do it?
I will do it, Mayor.
All right, do it.
Thank you. Dan Stuckey, Deputy Public Works Director, for the record. Good morning. We have been working, as you and Mayor know, and the supervisors know, we've been working for a while on bringing this technology to Carson City and doing it in a way that protects the aesthetics of the city and make sure that we meet the technical requirements. So, I was going, I have a PowerPoint. I was going to walk through kind of the four items that you mentioned, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If you don't mind. So, the four items we have in front of you today, three of the four for, for possible action. One item, 13D, is for discussion only. So, the first item, 13B, is the business impact statement because the proposed ordinance would have a fee associated with it, so we're required to do that. 13C is the first reading of the proposed ordinance that would bring the small cell policy and everything into the Carson, Chapter Five of the, or Title Five of the Carson City Municipal Code. 13D is the policy which the board has adopted and seen before back in 2019. We have amended it, and I will step through kind of the basic summary, high-level summary of what those amendments included. That is the item that is for discussion only because of the business impact statement requirements. We'll have to bring that back after discussion today to the next meeting. And then the last item there is the master license agreement. This will be required of all small cell providers to basically install this technology in the city. They'll have to come back to the board with a template, or with a master license agreement in the future. Today, we are showing you the template that we have to discuss. So, with that, I'll move forward. I wasn't going to get into the small cell technology, but we obviously have the providers on the line, and as well as myself and Todd, here to answer questions on that.
Dan, let me jump in for a little bit. Todd Reese, Deputy DA, for the record. Just as kind of a housekeeping thing, with the four items before you, the two items that wouldn't need to, that the board would need to take action on today if it wanted to move everything forward are the business impact statement and the ordinance. The business impact statement is required to be considered and acted upon 10 days before a rule is passed, and in this case, the business impact statement has to be acted on before the policy can. So, the policy will be brought back at the next meeting for the board to take action on. Today's meeting, it's a discussion item only. The master license agreement also is not critical to take action on today to move things forward. Depending on the discussion and the board's desires, it could request that the board, that the MLA be brought back before it at the next meeting as well.
Go ahead, Brett.
So, to follow up on, on that, is the thinking then that we would move, we would take action on the ordinance today because it requires a second reading, and we would have the second reading at the same time that we would be taking action on the policy and the MLA?
That's exactly correct.
Okay. And if, if we voted to approve the ordinance today, we still have the opportunity, based on what happens with the policy and the MLA, to change that vote on the second reading? Because I'm not super comfortable with approving the ordinance before having the MLA and the policy completed, but my understanding is that we have a second bite of that apple on the second reading. We could always vote no on the second reading.
That's, that's also correct.
Okay.
On, on that note, there are a few things about the business impact statement and the ordinance that I needed to just put on the record. For the business impact statement, on section number eight of the business impact statement, there are two does or does nots, and the second does not was inadvertently left unchecked, and that should be checked for the record. And that would read that it does not directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business. On the...
Excuse me, Supervisor Barrett.
That's okay. Go ahead until he's finished.
I don't know, okay. Usually you can throw something at me, but you can't get through these things here. The lights are kind of... Okay, go ahead. So, bear with me if I don't call your name.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. On the ordinance, there are a few technical corrections that will be, need to be made before the second reading. And specifically, that is correcting the section number for Section Six. We had two Section Fives. And correcting the date that the ordinance would become, would become effective.
What was the second one?
Correct, correcting the date that the ordinance becomes effective. The, the ordinance currently states that it becomes effective upon adoption, but there's certain required, certain statutory requirements that need to occur after passage and before it becomes, or after adoption before it becomes effective, and we just needed to clarify that.
All right.
Sorry, trying not to be dense. I, I don't see where we're talking about Section Five.
On page, one, two, three, on page three of the ordinance, it says, "Section Five, that no other provisions of the Carson City Municipal Code are affected by this ordinance." And then it also said, "Section Five..."
I got it, I got it, I got it. I was, sorry. I was not looking for Roman numeral, I was looking for the number five. Thank you.
And that's all the comments I have on those two at this time, and I'll turn it back over to Dan Stuckey unless the board has questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying that between the initial adoption of the ordinance and the secondary of adoption of the ordinance, there will be changes, and you were talking about some technical ones here, but there might be other changes that I would look upon as substantive. So, I would ask our District Attorney, Daniel, you've been down this road before. My concern is if there's a substantive change, do we have to have a four-week hiatus between the first and the second rather than the two weeks so people can be informed and the general public? Because, you know, this is, this has got many involved in it.
I'm happy to take up that question, Supervisor Barrett. We have had that discussion before in the record on previous items, and I'll just reiterate what I've said before on those occasions, which is, to the extent that there is any sort of a change, I'm going to take my mask off here because my glasses are fogging up. You know, really, sort of the critical inquiry is whether or not the changes are so vast that, you know, the differences and the distinctions between the first reading and the second reading are such that, you know, the members of the public really did not have an opportunity to provide input. Certainly, under those circumstances, it would be the advice of the DA's office to, you know, take that matter back to first reading. The other aspect of it that we would want to take a look at is whether or not the title itself of the ordinance has changed. Now, in that respect, you know, the title itself, which has to be very specific, that's required by both NRS and the city charter, we don't want to alter that because that's also would have an impact on the publication requirements. So, to the extent that there is a modification to the title of the ordinance, that's your, that's going to be the default option. That default option being, you're going to have to bring it back to first reading so you can republish. If there are other changes, and, and, you know, I mean, that's, it's kind of a difficult thing to say, you know, in terms of saying, you know, is this change a technical change or is this change a substantive change? When it comes to legislation, and this is what an ordinance is, it's local legislation. The insertion or the omission of, for example, even a colon, or a semicolon, or a comma, could have a substantive impact on the legislation as a whole. So, although it's a quote-unquote clerical or a technical correction by nature, at the same time, it may have a substantive impact. So, we would really have to look at it from a case-by-case analysis, and we would provide the recommendation accordingly.
Thank you, and I would ask it this way, then. Of course, my only concern is that the public generally know what's going on here. So, I would ask, are you prepared, after you've seen what those changes might be, to weigh one way or the other, as I've said to you before, I, I may not always agree with you, but I listen to my lawyer, and you're my lawyer on this. So, you're prepared to make that determination at that juncture, right?
I will definitely keep my hands on the steering wheel, and I'll keep an eye out for what the changes might be.
Thank you.
We've got questions out here, too.
Two.
Oh, who's first?
Sorry.
Brad, go ahead.
To follow up on that, if we have to end up bringing the ordinance back for a second first reading, then would we delay the MLA and policy action items to coincide with the second, the official second reading? Or would we take action on the MLA and policy on the second first reading and then just bring back the ordinance?
At that point, it would be somewhat up to the board's discretion. Once the business impact statement has, once the board has taken action on the business impact statement, it can then take action on the policy, somewhat independent of the first reading or second reading on the ordinance. So, if the board felt that the policy was sufficiently developed and didn't need any further discussion, it could take action on the policy at the first, at the first reading of the ordinance, assuming that the ordinance needed another first reading.
And, and I would just add, you know, to that statement as well, I'll kind of point out some of the provisions in the ordinance itself, which I have up on my laptop right now. And, and, you know, really, sort of the meat of the ordinance is in, is captured in Section Four, which incorporates by reference into the ordinance for legislative purposes, the policy, and then also the master license agreement. So, to that extent, the ordinance itself does not reiterate those specific substantive provisions of the policy or the license agreement. So, in that sense, if the ordinance were to be introduced, accepted, and then also adopted, that doesn't actually have any impact on the substance of those two documents that survive and exist outside of the ordinance itself, if that makes sense.
And, and that's what I was going to say. I think the ordinance is, is written in such a way that the meat of anything we're going to agree or disagree or change is in the policy and the MLA, not in the ordinance itself.
That's absolutely correct, Supervisor, and we deliberately crafted the language of the ordinance in that manner so that in the future, if there were any subsequent amendments that were necessary to those documents, you know, there would not necessarily be a need to go back into the ordinance, reopen it, and then provide it back on first and second reading.
Yeah, so the ordinance essentially is, is permissive language that, that allows us to create, Public Works to create the guiding document that we can change more readily.
That's correct. It creates the regulatory framework by which these other documents are incorporated.
Those are good lawyer words. Thank you.
Oh, Laurie, I'm sorry.
No problem. I thought, I'll just raise my hand if, or, I don't know, are the lights working? So, my other question that I had a discussion on was just to normalize the use of the word "cell" versus "cellular" throughout because the ordinance title looks to be using "cellular", and Section One uses "cell", anyway, but Section Three uses the word "cell". So, I just, I think we're being inconsistent in our titling of those, so just to work that out in the, in the ordinance, too. And then, just any technical piece on the 5.14030 on the number one, I just thought it would be better if we used a copy of the master licensing agreement template instead of the form on the front, just as a small technical or cleanup. Because that's what we're doing, is a template. Is that correct? A master license agreement template that all of the bodies will use? Anybody that wants to put it in?
That's correct, Supervisor.
Thank you.
So, Supervisor, I, I do want to provide a quick comment and response to that suggested change in language. I know that, you know, at the end of the day, it's not, you know, of a huge effect. I do want to just kind of chime in with my two cents on that. A form master licensing agreement, you know, when I was working with Todd on formulating this language, you know, a few months ago, actually, and, and I, I think, if I recall correctly, I think I may actually have suggested that we move away from the use of the term "template". And the reason why is because, you know, there may be some sort of an inference drawn from that, that, you know, it's actually just a base template upon which, you know, you know, providers could build on that or amend it, whereas a form master license agreement would actually be static. It's actually a form, and it's not subject to change. So, I know it's, it's really various, it's, it's a very subtle distinction, but, you know, in terms of crafting legislative language, I, I do want us to be more careful than not. So, again, not, just my two cents, I'm not lodging an objection to that proposed change.
And we just fix it in 13E not to be template.
Right.
To be consistent. I'm just looking for consistency. I'm just looking for consistency throughout the documents.
Absolutely.
And I'm fine with that.
And with respect to your earlier comment, your first comment about, you know, "cell" versus "cellular," you know, and items like that, absolutely. You know, the language should be consistent throughout. You should use one term at all times.
Thank you. And I'm fine with then 13E being fixed to form instead of template. Again, thank you, and just want consistent.
Go.
All right, we'll move forward. So I just, you know, I was going to skip kind of 13B and 13C and go right to the policy and those policy revisions since last time it was in front of the board. There was a redline version of the policy in your packet. There seems like there's a lot going on, and there was a lot going on, but I, we feel that the, you know, what you saw before, the bulk of those aesthetic requirements and technical requirements are still there. And really, what the main parts of these changes are, really conforming to that FCC order, making sure we're conforming to federal law, clarifying the processes and procedures for the application for a building permit, the expected timeline for city review, laying out the requirements that would be included with the submittal of the application, the supporting documentation, really outlining that, cleaning that up, and then, of course, establishing those fees for the application process. So those were the big changes. As the board knows, we, and as Verizon mentioned in the public comment, we've been working with all of these providers for two years. There has been multiple, four working group meetings where, pre-COVID, where we got together in a conference room and hashed out a lot of the details that you see in the policy today. Todd has spent, you know, probably hundreds of hours back and forth drafting what you see in front of you today, working with the providers on language, accepting comments, working, you know, responding to their comments. So we feel like it's really been a good faith effort on the city and on the providers to really come together and come to a kind of agreement with what you see today. So I did, I think it's important to note that on the record. With that, on the policy, we did have some changes that I'd like to make on the record. I think the print is somewhat small up there, so I will read them as well. If you don't mind if we step through those, then we can collect any, you know, comments and revisions that you have, but I would like to start out by doing that. So the first, and this is item 13D, the policy, and these are proposed modifications that staff has. So on page two of the policy, Section 2A5, Part B, we would like to add the sentence there in red, "Millimeter wave antennas shall be concealed or otherwise camouflaged to the extent technically feasible." And the reason we did this, our understanding and working with the providers is that the millimeter wave antennas, if you completely enclose them in a radome, that they, there's interference issues that happen. So we allowed an exception there, but then we didn't really clarify that even though we're allowing an exception, you still have to make a good effort to kind of camouflage that antenna. So that was the reason for that ad on Section 2A5, Part B. Moving on to page three of the policy, and this is Section 2A11. And this is a pretty easy one. After the first sentence, there was no period after the word "antenna." So we have added that. Moving on to page five of the policy, and this is Section 2 still, and it's item B2. And in that first sentence, there was no, it basically read, "The city will consider a request to convert owned streetlight poles into city-owned streetlight poles." There was supposed to be NV Energy in front of that, so we have added NVE. And it is, NVE is defined earlier in previous part as NV Energy. That's that change. Moving on to page six of the policy, shown up there in red, and this is Section F, F5 on page six. And this is really kind of just clarifying the appropriate electrical code and Carson City standards and applicable laws, and defining that National Electric Code. So more of a clarifying ad there. And then, in that same area, we added a Section F6 right below that F5. And this reads, "The city may require the installation of electric meter with capacity beyond that required by the NEC. In such case, the city will pay for the difference in cost between the installation of a meter required by the NEC and the city's required meter." And this is just in the case that, you know, the city may have a master plan or capacity needs that exceed the requirements of NEC. And so rather than making the wireless provider pay for that additional cost to make, add that capacity, the city would cover that cost. We felt that was fair. Moving on to page seven, and please feel free to stop me at any time if I'm going too fast, or tell me to hurry up if I'm going too slow as well. Page seven, Section 3, and this is Part A, License Agreement. And towards the end of that, there's basically just some clarifying language. "In the event of conflicting language between the policy and the master license agreement, we're just spelling out which would govern." And in some cases, the policy would govern; in some cases, the master license agreement would govern. And so it's just clarifying it there. Moving on to page nine of the policy, this is Section 3D13. And it originally stated that a letter stating "there is no noise-producing equipment associated with the SCWE or an associated study confirming the noise generated, but any noise-generating equipment will not exceed the standards set forth in the applicable regulations." We added a letter from a qualified person there. Again, just more clarification that it does need to come from somebody who is qualified to be making that statement. Moving on, same page, page nine, Section 3, and it's the first paragraph below item D16. And this was basically to satisfy, to further clarify kind of the estimated review schedule by the city to meet the shot clock requirement. So we added in some additional language there. So I will actually just read this change into the record that you see up there in red. "If in compliance, the city will make all reasonable efforts to complete further processing and review within 60 calendar days of receiving the application. If the equipment will be located on an existing pole or within 90 calendar days, if the equipment will be located on a pole that is proposed to be newly installed or a pole being accepted by the city from NV Energy under Section 2.1 of this policy." I believe this is the last, the last change of the, that we're proposing on the policy. This is page 10, Section 3, and it's item H, Expected Timeline, and it's the third bullet of that section. And again, this kind of goes back to the previous revision. We're just clarifying the 60 or 90 calendar days there, and similar language is what you see before.
Yeah, Dan, it occurs to me that it might be helpful if you just gave a high-level overview of what's going on here so the public can understand what's happening with small cell development. And I'd like to know what kind of, if we have, if there are federal guidelines that we have to meet and state guidelines we have to meet, I'd like to know about those.
Yes, yeah, I can.
But just give a high-level one about what's happening here. Don't get, you don't have to get in too much into the details, but what's happening?
Yeah, for sure. So basically, a high-level summary. There's an evolving technology, and I'm not an expert in this at all, but there's been, you know, there's the typical big towers that you see, the cellular towers. Well, now, the industry and the 5G technology is moving towards installing these small cell devices on poles within denser areas of cities around the country. And with that, that's the small cell technology. And so in many cases, they're looking, like they are here, at installing in-city right-of-way, on city streetlights, on city traffic signals, on city poles. So that's the technology that the providers are bringing. The policy is really addressing, from the city perspective, I mean, we've obviously invested a lot in our downtown area to look nice. We understand we want to promote technology. I mean, obviously, this is a board decision, but we're trying to, you know, work with promoting technology and bringing this service while protecting the aesthetics that we've invested so heavily in, in downtown and other areas of the city. So working together to define those requirements technically and aesthetically, that's in this policy. As far as the FCC, there is an FCC order that basically is requiring municipalities to, you know, not be more burdensome than other types, similar types of applications from an aesthetic point of view, from a fee point of view. And so we've been working with providers to establish that, that meets those federal, that federal order and requirements, and still, what we feel like is still protecting us aesthetically, I guess, or from, you know.
Does a federal law allow us to say no development?
This is Todd Reese, Deputy DA, for the record. Mayor, the federal law does not allow us to say no to the development.
Okay. Because I think state law mirrors what federal law, the last legislative session said about the same thing, I think. I think there's a state statute on it.
Mayor, I'd have to double-check the state statutes. I've been hip-deep in the federal law.
Okay. Go ahead, Dan, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, I think that was pretty much the end of my summary. I think there's, I know there's been questions about the health and safety that could come from these cellular devices, or these wireless devices. You know, that is governed by the federal government as well. And again, I'm not an expert on this, but I know, you know, there is the studies that are always happening and certain standards as far as radio frequency radiation and those kind of things, that all these devices have to meet those thresholds that are established by the federal government. We do have in numerous locations in the policy, as well as the MLA, we state that those, whatever devices are in Carson City must meet whatever those thresholds and safety requirements for radiation are at the time, and they can adapt to because, as those may change in the future. It is my understanding that in the MLA, that they're required, whatever small cell device, it must keep going with whatever federal requirements are in place, so.
Because it gets down to the question, should we have, should we have health people here talk to us about the health advisability of 5G? Or is that, because it seems to me that, what I've read, anyway, is that, you know, that that policy has been set at the federal level, and we're, we live with what they've told us to do. That's what I understand, anyway, but you guys tell me differently.
Mr. Mayor, this is Todd Reese, Deputy DA, for the record. That was one of the things I was going to touch on as well, and yes, you're absolutely correct. The FCC has said that as long as the equipment meets the radio frequency radiation guidelines set by the FCC, then we cannot prohibit the equipment. That's similar, there's a similar preemption issue with the interference, radio frequency interference. That's generally preempted by the FCC. As a practical matter, there will be a back-and-forth between the providers and the city trying to resolve interference first. But if things come to loggerheads, then that would be an FCC issue as opposed to a issue that the city could regulate.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Dan.
So hopefully, that was helpful as far as the summary, the high level.
Yeah, I think it's just, you know, because we've got a lot of pages here, a lot of documents, and, you know, it's a new technology, and, you know, I don't want folks to think we're going to be stuck, putting stuff on their, around their house, I mean, on their private property, which is not here. It's a question of how we integrate use of city property with this technology, and because we've got a lot of providers who want to do it, too. So we don't want to have a big mess of equipment on a pole for each provider. We have to find a way to make these things work together. And that's what's going on here, as I understand it. I'm not certain I understand all the, you know, what the providers' concern is with respect to fees, but I'll listen to what they have to say.
Okay. Do you?
Dan, with your permission, I was hoping to jump in for a little bit. I wanted to fill in a little bit more, Mayor, on some of the things that you asked about. But first, I thought I should take a step back and apologize to some extent for all the paperwork you have. I have a feeling that most of that was generated, or went through me. And part of the discussion we were having earlier about the policy and the MLA and the approval dates for it, a lot of the discussions we'll have about the policy also impact the MLA. So there's certain things that have to, that affect both that will need to be decided at some point before they're approved.
Are you going to highlight those issues that we need to focus on?
I will, Mr. Mayor. The small cell policy, or the small cell FCC orders have spawned a cottage industry of litigation, and that's ongoing. There, as we move forward with this, there may be changes that we will need to make either to the policy or the MLA at some time in the future, a year, two, three years down the line, that will have to do with court decisions changing the way the regulatory scheme operates. And case in point, earlier in August, the Ninth Circuit took up a case that was addressing the FCC order's aesthetic guidelines. The FCC ordered that the aesthetic guidelines must be reasonable, no more burdensome than applied to other types of infrastructure deployments, and objective and published in advance. The Ninth Circuit modified that, stating that the aesthetic requirements must be reasonable, must be not unreasonably discriminate among providers of functionally equivalent services. In this case, a functionally equivalent service would be the small cell providers, and must be published in advance. Other litigation, both from the industry side and from the local government side, is pending. There is some litigation pending on the costs and fees that can be charged. So there's every possibility that that may change. Briefly, the, a few more areas of the policy that are currently being discussed are Section 2A7. It's on page three, I believe. Discussions with Verizon were centered around whether or not exceeding the average height, average pole height by 20% would be sufficient from a technical standpoint to make their equipment effective, operational. That was raised yesterday, and I haven't had a chance to really discuss that here at the city or make any, form any opinion on it. On Section 2F5, which is on page six of the policy, there's, and this also kind of dovetails in with Section 4D under the fees regarding electrical meters. There was a request on the city side to adjust the, adjust the capacity of the electric meter to meet city needs if the city needed a electric meter to be, more capacity on that electric meter. That's not a cost, an increased capacity beyond what's required by the National Electric Code isn't a cost that can necessarily be passed on to providers. So there needs to be some language worked out as to the sharing of costs in that instance.
Which we added.
Which we did add, yes. The, um, the next thing I believe I wanted to touch base on was the The, the next thing I believe I wanted to touch base on was the application fee. The FCC, the FCC order states that a presumptively reasonable application fee is $500 for nonrecurring fees, including a single upfront application that includes up to five small wireless facilities with an additional 100 for each facility beyond five, or $1,000 for nonrecurring fees if, for equipment that will be located on a new pole. The city may charge fees in excess of that if the fees are a reasonable approximation of the costs. Those costs themselves are reasonable and they're nondiscriminatory. In the public comment, you heard, I believe, Chris comment that the city needed to demonstrate their actual costs to process the, process the applications.
If they go over 500 bucks.
Right. Anything over 500 bucks per five, per application for five facilities. There, the exact language in the order is a reasonable approximation of the costs. Since we haven't processed any of those, you know, I think the city engineers' approximation is a reasonable approximation of the costs. As we do process these, however, the city will need to pay attention to its costs in processing these. And if the $1,400 is no longer a reasonable approximation of the costs for the city to process this, that will need to be adjusted. I believe that's why the providers are proposing, or at least Verizon is proposing, a deposit structure where the small cell provider would provide a set deposit to the city, and then the city would essentially bill against that as it's processing the application and either return the excess money if our costs did not meet that amount, or ask the provider for additional money if our costs exceeded that amount. Whichever way, I think that either way is legally defensible. But the, regardless of which way is chosen, the city's going to have to pay attention to its costs to process the applications. Otherwise, it's potentially opening itself up to litigation over those costs.
Todd or Dan, were there any objections from the vendors on our analysis of staff time cost? So in other words, if we went to a deposit system for billing against, actual time against that deposit, was everybody agreeable to our estimate, estimate of cost for staff time?
Yes, I can answer that. The memo was attached that I prepared, and I believe it was over a year ago when we were doing the working group conversations. It was presented to four or five of the different providers. They reviewed multiple occasions, and there was no objections to the breakdown of staff hours or the cost at those meetings. I think this has recently come up with Verizon, recently through the last, you know, month or so on that. But as far as the summary of the memo, there was no objections at the time that was issued.
So therefore, would there be any objections on our side from staff? Like, have you had a chance to talk about this and look at it, the deposit system, to determine if there are appropriate reasons that we would not want to agree to that?
So as far as the deposit structure, to me, I mean, there's a, there's a cost associated with setting up a deposit structure to the city. It's hard to know exactly how many of these applications are coming in, but if we have to have somebody that's checking and tracking every application and processing reimbursements, there's a significant cost, in my opinion, associated with that, that would be the burden of the city. So that is my initial thought on that, that structure. And I guess there's potential that the cost could be higher than the 1,400 that I presented as well, and so what happens in that scenario for those costs? So, I mean, that's, that's kind of my initial thoughts on, on when I heard that recommendation.
Well, I would guess that if the vendors want to go to a deposit system, then what comes with that, it both sides of the equation. Like, if it ends up being less, it's less and they get a refund of a portion of that deposit. And if it's more, they agreed to that, so therefore they would have to increase their deposit to pay for the additional billing.
Say the last part again. I didn't, my mind flicked off there.
So if we agreed, and I'm not speaking for the board, I'm just running through this through in my head. If the, if staff and we agreed to a deposit system, then the vendor's going to put up the $1,400 in a deposit account, we're going to bill against that $1,400 for actual staff time for review. That's a double edged sword. So if staff time comes up to $1,250, they're going to get a $150 refund. These are, I'm just pulling these numbers because a portion of that 1,400 has to do with the electricity costs in the meter. So the whole 1,400 isn't for the application review.
Mr. Supervisor Bonkowski, let me jump in there. The 1,400 is for the application review. The electric, electric meter fee and the electricity fee and the RO right away.
Those are any attachment fees?
Usage fee are under the attachment fees, and they would be paid on a yearly basis.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, and that's why I'm just picking numbers. But on the other hand, if the billable rate that nobody has objected to for staff review exceeds the $1,400, then they would have to put more, a higher deposit up to pay for that difference. I mean, it's got to work both ways. If that's the system that we're going to, then it's got to be compensation for the actual time spent times the approved rate.
Supervisor Bonkowski, if I may. Verizon did provide some public comment, a written public comment, and as part of their edits to the policy, what you're describing is what they proposed. They had language both saying that if the cost was less, they would get a refund, and if the cost was more, that they would pay the, pay the extra money for the actual cost.
And then that would cover our legal obligation for watching actual costs?
Correct.
Okay. I think I understand it.
I've got lights on over here. Laurie, I don't know if John's on, Stacy?
I turned mine off.
Okay.
So if I understand the potential for a deposit methodology for billing against it, I guess when I heard you read something else, it triggers another thought to me. So I'm Verizon and I'm going to submit, I don't know, 500 pole applications at the same time. And then I'm AT&amp;T and I'm going to submit two poles because I left two off of a prior application. So now I'm going to track application by application to each fee and the hours on each application, and now I am not going to necessarily have equal charges. And was that not, I'm not going to be fair across the class unless you're telling me that just being actual is fair across the class. If what I'm saying is making sense, because maybe it takes me longer. I've got the new guy working on the 500 apps or, and the super experienced one that can approve the two adds to the AT&amp;T missed poles. I'm just kind of walking this through, is to what are we getting to versus a fixed fee and annually you could just look at the total hours spent on poles divided by the number of poles submitted and do the math? Or is it application by application?
Supervisor Bagwell, that's, that's a great observation. I think that regardless of whether you have a fixed fee that applies to each application or whether you have a deposit structure that's billed actual cost to that application, I think either would be fair across the providers because you're applying the same standard to each provider. The providers, you know, the fixed fee to some extent has the city absorb, you know, applications that take a long time to process because of technical issues or problems with the application or problems with the location of the pole or whatever it may be. The deposit structure would pass those costs on to the provider. I think either of them would be, would meet the, being fair and reasonable and treating all the providers the same.
And would the fee include overhead charge, right? So if I'm hourly, whatever, $20 an hour, it's standard to charge $30 for that guy, right? So are we going to come up then with set rates that we will apply to cover the overhead portion of the operation? I'm trying to get to what is actual, too, that we're all under the same understanding of what's going on here.
I would just like to make a general comment. Darren Schultz, for the record, Public Works Director. The way that Dan went through and came up with the $1,400 was a, was a loaded rate, right? Of actual time spent on reviewing the application. If we want to be all encompassing and we want to track everyone that comes in, that was not included in that analysis. So if we want to go that way, my suggestion is that we would increase the $1,400 because I can tell you right now it's going to be more than that based on tracking every application that comes in and tracking the hours that it takes to review that application. That wasn't part of what we estimated, and that's going to change things. We'll have to put in place some sort of a tracking, whether it be a software, whether it be a spreadsheet, you know, so that, so that as that time gets done, it gets, it gets broken up. So if we want to get into those details where, where everything is paid for specifically, that takes our estimate and it's no longer valid. So I would say that that number actually needs to go up because we didn't include that when we went through it the first time.
All right. Stacy?
You personally answered my question. So we don't at present have a system that allows us to do that on a per application basis. We don't, we'd have to design something or purchase something or invent something to be able to do it on an application by application basis. So then the next question I have is for Todd. If we, if we put in the policy that we will review on an annual basis our actual cost to review permits, do you believe that's sufficient to meet the intent of the law and is defensible?
Supervisor, Jimmy, that's a great question. I don't know if an annual basis would be sufficient. I think that an annual basis would be sufficient once we have experience processing these applications. I think at the beginning, while we're both gaining experience processing the applications and coming up to speed on the learning curve of reviewing the applications, that it probably warrants reviewing the costs more often, simply to make sure that we are being above board and, and clear with what our costs are.
So it might make some sense for us to, on the front end, do the deposit process with a reevaluation of our costs, and maybe the deposit isn't 1,400, maybe it's 2,000 or 2,500, whatever that number is. And then in the first year of the policies being in place, we use that deposit process with the idea that we transition afterwards to a fixed fee based off of historic performance.
That structure would certainly be workable. We could design an agreement or a policy around that as to whether that would be ideal for the city. I would defer to either Darren or Lee or to Dan Stuckey.
And then one final question about this. If we, that question left my head. Go ahead, Brad. It'll come back to me.
So to ask Stacy's question in another way, go ahead. Forget it again, old man.
I assume this, the master license agreement in the policy is a board, board approved document that can be, that will need to come back as changes are made, but it's, it's a simple one agenda item process. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's a fair statement.
So we can be pretty reactive, if we need to be, to the master license agreement in the policy component?
We.
You're thinking of workload, aren't you?
What's that?
You're thinking of workload, aren't you?
Partially. The, the board can be very responsive in terms of the policy.
Yeah.
In terms of the, and in terms of the form MLA, if it wants to adjust the form MLA. As to the individual MLAs that are entered into with each of the providers, the changes to those MLAs would be governed by the terms of the MLA with the provider and would have to proceed according to that.
Right. But I was talking about the changes that we would make would mostly be in the policy because the MLA refers to the policy.
Correct.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks.
So to ask Stacy's question a different way, are you comfortable that the $1,400 fixed fee is legally defensible as a reasonable approximation of the fees or of our cost for the application review, regardless of whether the actual cost ends up being higher or lower than that amount? And then we would do, say, an annual review and adjust that fixed fee amount based on actual experience down the road, whether that's 12 months or 18 months or 24 months down the road?
Based on the city engineers, what he set forth in that, in that document, I am comfortable that that's a reasonable approximate, approximation of our projected costs. That said, we have no experience processing any of these. The providers, or at least Verizon and AT&amp;T, have pushed back against that 1,400 number saying that their experience with other jurisdictions is that the average cost to process some of these applications is between $600 and $800. There, that's a recent pushback, say, within the last few months. As Dan mentioned, when his memorandum was originally shared with the providers, they were, they accepted the memorandum and said that it seemed like a reasonable estimate of costs. And as, you know, and I'm comfortable that it's also a reasonable estimate of our costs. I do think that as we initially implement this, we should revisit, rather than wait 12 months, we should revisit it sooner than that, revisit it maybe at the three month or the six month point, depending on how many applications we've processed. And just look and make sure we're still being honest with ourselves and whether the $1,400 is, is still a reasonable approximation of the costs.
Hang on a minute. I've got a question up here. I don't know if John's question dovetails here, but we'll get to you. Don't worry. John, Sue first, Barrett. I didn't hear that.
If Brad has more questions, he can go, and then I'll go after he's done.
Want to go now, then? John, go ahead, and then we'll go to Dan.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, the federal government, as you just told us, says we have to do this, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, Verizon and AT&amp;T are two large players in telecommunications who have what I would call deep pockets, correct?
Supervisor Barrett, you are correct. The federal government has said, the FCC orders have said, that we can charge $500 for an application of up to five sites and $100 per site beyond that, or we can charge a fee that is a reasonable approximation of costs, where the costs themselves are reasonable and the costs are nondiscriminatory.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we're estimating this with no experience, correct?
You are correct.
I, I'm willing to listen to them because I always will listen to a lobbyist, but the truth of the matter is, I think we do it the way we want and they can sue us if they want.
Good, Dan. Jump in there. We'll go back to you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Can I, can I continue, Bob?
Can I, can I continue, Bob?
He's got, he wanted to talk, what you were going to talk about there. He was going to answer something you wanted. Is that what you wanted to go down there?
I was just going to add a little bit on the fee, the reasonable and fairness of the fee that we established, just, I think, a tidbit that might be helpful to the board. You know, City of Reno was going through this process and one of the reasons, obviously it's approximation, is the way it's written of a fair and reasonable fee, which we have done that. I believe it's fair and reasonable based off the analysis that I did. I also think, and we use this in our own engineering analysis of scopes and fees from consultants, we look at what's, you know, what we've done historically, what others in Northern Nevada are doing as a comparative, from a comparative standpoint. I do want to point out, I think it's important to note, the City of Reno obviously went through this policy development about a year ahead of us. And, you know, Carson City is, we're our own, our own place here and we do our things our own way, but I do think it's important to note that I just checked their fee schedule. This is from fiscal year 18 and 19, when they initially adopted their permit fee for small cell, and it was $1,297 per application, per location. They update their fee schedule yearly based off a CPI index, so it's slightly, probably slightly higher now, but I just wanted to note that, that when you look at that and look at where we are, I do believe it's fair and reasonable.
Brad, sorry, jump in, Stacy's got there. Just go for it.
So if we went with a fixed fee, then that creates or prevents us from creating bureaucracy to manage minimal amounts of money. Is that correct?
I, I would, I would defer to either Darren or Dan, but I do, I do believe that's correct.
For the record, Darren shook his head, yes. I would agree with Dan that we have a better idea of what our costs are than, than vendors do. The vendor's idea of our costs is what they hope them to be, not what they actually are. So I would depend on our staff before I would listen to a vendor. Going back to one of Lori's comments, there is a 10-location maximum per application, is that correct, as a batch application? So we couldn't have somebody that submitted 500 locations?
That is correct. And, and one of the proposed modifications that we'd like to make to the MLA that I haven't got to takes that down to five on the batch applications from 10. But yes, you couldn't submit 500 at one time as batch application.
Right. And in fact, because we have federally mandated timeframes that we have to review these applications, we should probably be looking at, as you mentioned, to make sure that we can sift through the applications in the appropriate amount of time. We wouldn't want to allow 100 applications to be submitted all at once because we would not be able to meet the timeframes for review.
Supervisor, you are correct. There is a federally mandated, what's called a shot clock. It's 60 days for a facility that's co-located on, or that's located on an existing pole or 90 days for a facility that involves the placement of a new pole. The amount of applications that are submitted at one time would likely be a factor in whether or not we could meet that timeframe. If somebody's, you know, taking Supervisor Bagwell's example, if somebody submitted a batch application with 500 poles, I don't think the FCC would expect us to meet the shot clock for every single application.
Yeah, well, that question might be answered through litigation, though.
You're, you're absolutely right that we, all the city could do is act as reasonably as it thinks it can. And you're correct that if the provider felt that we were not acting reasonably, then we would end up in litigation.
And Dan, can you walk us through who on staff is going to be reviewing the applications or the total number of departments that are going to be going or participating in the review process? Because my concern is that community development is going to be part of this application review process and they already have a backlog on business licenses that we're trying to clear up. We have, you know, some of the, we have many, many projects that they're working on as far as permitting and plan checking. So, you know, we have to be able to look at this and make sure that we can accommodate what we're being mandated to accommodate, including if we need to bring additional part-time people on for the initial wave of applications. I'd like to know that so that we can plan for that.
You know, that's a great point. You're absolutely correct. Our, so it would go through community development as where these, just like another building permit application, it would be routed to development, engineering, planning would see it. Our development and engineering staff is fully maximized with development that's been happening over the last, you know, three to four years that increase. So definitely it would, it would be an opportunity where we'd probably need to figure out ways, creative ways possibly to, to process these applications in a timely manner. You asked about other departments, engineering, development engineering would be involved, our real property manager would be involved, GIS would be involved as we would want to input this data into our inventory, as well as our communications, radio operations lead in public works would be involved on the review. So it is, it does hit a lot of things from the review side in regards to public works and community development.
Anybody, Stacy, your light's still on? Go.
I wanted to go over some, some comments I had on the policy before we went to the MLA. So I just, I thought it makes sense to do that on the policy before we try to combine two things. Is that appropriate? Mr. Mayor or Dan?
Go, try it.
Okay. The, just in general, it seems like the only comments you're getting are from Verizon. I know from before there were more participants, but can you just, for the record, state that we are getting more communications than just from one company?
For the record, yes. We, we're getting communications, we're having communications primarily with Verizon and AT&amp;T. However, periodically we have gotten communications from other companies.
Okay. We talked about this before and I don't, I don't remember the exact answer. What we're talking about here is small cell wireless in or on city property or in or on city right-of-way. How do we, if, if at all, regulate small cell wireless from an aesthetic point of view on private property? Do we have the ability to do that like we can regulate aesthetics in, in any building permit through our master plan?
Lee Plummels back there, working hard, so. Yeah, it would go through the planning side on private development and have to meet whatever standards are in code for, for wireless communication devices.
So I'm sorry, I didn't review it, but do we have a section on that in code right now? So we're comfortable that what we have for a private side, we've done what we can do? We're okay? He's nodding yes.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure because that was a question that somebody had. I mean, I don't know what percentage of these are going to end up being on private property versus what percentage are going to be on public property, you know? But the permit component of this would pertain regardless, correct?
Yes, it would. It would either go through the private side on the permits through the private side or what we're talking about today.
Yeah, if I owned a building downtown and I wanted to erect a mast on the building that I own, they would still have to go through the permitting process.
Yes.
And this may have been corrected. So A2, attachment to wooden poles, you originally had language, and I didn't, I didn't go back and forth in reference whether this changed. You took out prohibited, attachment to existing wooden poles within the limits of the planned corridor beautification project is prohibited. Did you take it out because there are no more wooden poles in that area, which I don't think is the case? Or why did we take that out?
The, this is Todd Reese, Deputy DA. The, I believe that's an A2 or the, the next version of that is an A2B, attachment to existing wooden poles within the downtown redevelopment areas or within the limits of the planned corridor beautification projects is strongly discouraged. We, we changed that from prohibited.
That's my question.
The providers pushed back against us on that and their comment was that we can't necessarily prohibit, through the FCC orders, we can't necessarily prohibit the, the deployment of items on, on wooden poles as opposed to metal poles. To some extent...
Do you agree with that?
Yes and no. As long as we have a good reason to prohibit on wooden poles, then I'm comfortable with defending that. If we're just saying we don't like wooden poles, I'm not sure how defensible that would be in court. In this particular instance, the, the downtown redevelopment areas, my understanding is that, you know, as, as written in the policy, my understanding is that we are actively requiring facility, utility providers to underground those poles and those utilities. And so, you know, we've kind of said to the small cell providers, you're, if you want to do that, you're doing it at your own risk because we're actively undergrounding that.
Okay. Well, I, I mean, I think, I think we could, I would prefer to leave the word prohibited in there.
Okay.
I think it's defensible in the sense that we have, as a board, and I don't know if this is actually in policy, but we certainly have made a policy of saying that we are beautifying our downtown by moving all utilities underground, which implies an elimination certainly of, of wooden poles. So that's my two cents. I would leave the word prohibited in. On B1, why would an applicant, well, it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. I was going to ask why they would want to convert it to a city-owned pole, but I don't really care. On D4, should we add language to D4 that, because we can't, it sounds like I heard you say, this is one of the language that I wanted in, was in terms of them being responsible for mitigating interference. It sounds like from what you've said that we're not allowed to make that determination. So can we then say that small cell wireless cannot go on city infrastructure that has communications devices on it? Can we make that statement?
All right.
And do we want to make that statement?
No.
That's, that's a good question and the answer is that I would have to look into that. My, my initial reaction to that is that we may not be able to say that. If we're coming at it from an interference standpoint, interference is generally preempted by the FCC and while, you know, in discussions with the providers, we both don't want interference, you know, and they're going to be operating in a, in a band of the spectrum that is specifically reserved for wireless communications. And so there's, hopefully there won't be interference, but in the instance that it is, I believe we both have interest to resolve it together. However, if we can't, then our recourse is the FCC.
Okay. I, I think there's more than just interference. I think there's access to, you know, we have microwave antennas, we have communications devices on traffic signals, you know, potentially there's more than just interference issues, but I'll leave it at that. On the pavement fee, I just wanted to confirm that the pavement patching fee is just a fee that they pay to disturb the pavement and not the cost that's supposed to, they still have to patch the pavement on their dime. They're just paying a fee if they're cutting into our pavement. That fee doesn't include us fixing it, correct?
Yes. Yes, you're correct.
That was it. Thank you.
Okay, Board. I think Brad had a pretty good idea at the, at the beginning of the, when we started this. I think we could go for a long time, but I think we would probably ought to take up the business impact statement and the ordinance and then have the staff come back with cleaning all this up, put their recommendations in it. And I think what you're hearing here today is, you know, we want, we want the simplest way on the fees and that's probably $1,400, where, you know, that seems to be like that tailors up with what Reno's doing right now. But see what, you know, draft it up so it's clean and then we'll take that up at the first reading of the, of the second reading of the, of the ordinance. And if we want to delay things, we'll just put off the second reading of the ordinance, the second reading, and then deal with this because I think we could go on for a long time. And I, and I think you guys need to know, you know, kind of where we are up here. But I don't know that it's going to be fruitful for us to go through each item and say yes, no, whatever, because I think, you know, one, there's a lot, there's a lot of that going on and we have to trust our staff to, to deal with some of these, not necessarily smaller items, but issues about how this gets done. I don't know if the board wants to do that, but, you know, we could spend as much time as we want here to do it, I think. But I think you've got a pretty good idea of where, where we're coming from up here. I think, maybe not.
I've got a couple of questions.
Go.
Just to, to help so that we know where we're going the next, I may have a clarification that you indicated that you thought the agreement said they have to, so let's say a health standard comes out at the FCC and they change to say now the, it can only give off so much of X. Where is it that says they have to continually comply and would have to change the equipment out to new instead of just at the time of application? Is that A12, just saying it has to meet the radio frequency? I just want to make sure that's in there and that you can keep it as a comment in case you think anything needs to be solidified when you bring it back.
That's a good question, Supervisor Bagwell. I have two answers for you.
Okay.
I, I agree, yes, that is an A12 and that was purposely put in to the, to the policy for that reason. If the FCC changed the requirements for radiation, then we would, you know, expect the providers to address that with their equipment. There is also a provision in the master licensing agreement, I believe it's 20.5, that says if any applicable law sets forth a term or provision that is inconsistent with or different than this agreement, the parties agree to promptly amend the agreement to effect the term or provision. Now that's, you know, more referring to terms and provisions, but I would look at that and say if, if the FCC is changing how it regulates equipment and the FCC states this applies to all the equipment that's out there right now, then I would expect the supervisors, or sorry, the small cell providers to address their equipment.
I just like putting that kind of stuff on the record so if there's any issues that come up later, everybody, all the parties agreed that that's what it says. Because I am getting a lot of concern from the public because that's the other issue is we're doing a 10-year agreement with, with such new technology. Is that the right answer, to do 10 years? Because I don't see a whole bunch of out clauses for us either. I see more they can get out unilaterally.
Supervisor Bagwell, I don't know if 10 years is the best term for the city or not. I will say that from the provide, what I've heard from the providers is that they are looking for a longer agreement so that they can justify the investment of time and energy into the community and so that they'll be, they have some assurances that they'll be able to operate their equipment.
Yeah, I get that. If the FCC were to change the equipment out, do they have to do new applications to change the equipment?
It would depend on, it would depend on what the change was. There is clauses in the master licensing agreement, I believe. There is clauses in the master licensing agreement, I believe, that permit them to change out their equipment with like-kind equipment. So, if their equipment is, like, for instance, if they're just, if they have one model up there and they're just upgrading it to a new model, and there's no real aesthetic change, it's more, you know, equipment change, the weight of the equipment isn't changing, the amount of electricity isn't changing, or, you know, we can work with them on the electricity, then they would be permitted to change that without going through a new review. If, however, the FCC order changes and now they're required to put five more pieces of equipment up there, then they would be required to go through the application process anew and so that the additional equipment could be vetted and approved.
Thank you.
Brad.
Mayor, I just wanted to say that I am fine with taking action on the business impact statement and the ordinance and then just providing direction to staff on the policy in the M L A form.
I think, you know, I, these are, as Lori mentions, these are 10-year agreements, but they're also very technical agreements where, you know, we, just let me leave it like that, we're not going to solve all the, I mean, because none of us up here are electricians or whatever, engineers. I mean, we've got to depend on what your recommendation is at some point in time. But I, and I know you're not getting pushed around by the providers, and so if there's something you need us to discuss today that you need guidance on, let us know right now and we'll take it up.
I think, I mean, we've had some good discussion on the policy. I'm not sure if there's anything on the M L A side that you guys would like to comment on further that we can collect from you. I mean, that might be beneficial.
Yeah, we didn't really go over corrections to the...
M L A.
Well, to the M L A or to the ordinance, because they had that one change on the ordinance too.
Okay.
You want to go back to the ordinance and make the change?
Well, let's, can we just take action on the documents? Can we just start with the business impact statement?
All right, let's take it, if it's okay with the Board. Listen, I'm not trying to horse anything through here. I just want to make sure that we get, you know, that we orderly do this because there's a lot of stuff in here. Let's take up a motion on the first, the business impact statement. No, we don't have to do a motion on that, do we?
Yeah, we do, and I can do that.
Take a motion on the business impact statement with one correction.
I move to accept the business impact statement with a correction to page four of the statement to check the box that reads, "Does not directly restrict the formation, operation, or expansion of a business."
There's a motion and a second on the business impact statement with one correction. All discussion on a motion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's take up, the next one is, let's take up the ordinance with, Brad, you want to try that and see what the change is on the ordinance?
Right. Dan already went over the change to the second section five, making it section six. On page 399 of our packet in 5.14.030, number two, the last line on page 399, I'd like to add the word fees in the last line, so it says, "Which sets forth the fees, policies, procedures, and other requirements." That's consistent language with the language in the rest of the agreement and the other documents.
Good call.
And then what was the other change? You had two changes, Dan. One was the, oh, the date. And the third change was the date that the ordinance is to be effective.
Cell and cellular.
Correct. So, the fourth change would be to cut or to amend the language so that it's consistent throughout the document between the use of cell and cellular. So, four total changes.
And section five becomes six.
I went over that. That was the first change. Then I would move to introduce on first reading, Bill 112, with the four corrections read into the record.
There's a motion and a second on the motion discussion. Hearing and seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post-nay, carry. Thank you, guys. Talked to the providers. You know, you're going to have to work through this issue with the deposit, but my sense is that you're better off the way you've got it right now, but that's just me. You guys figure out the one that's probably the easiest for you to administer, the easiest one that we could have to justify what we're doing in terms of costs if somebody pushes the button on us, okay? But bring back your analysis, bring back this kind of a clean copy of the M L A and the policy, and we'll take that up. When we take up this, the second reading of the ordinance, okay?
And Dan, you have my changes on the M L A? Okay.
Everybody understand that? We okay with that, Board? All right. Todd Reese, you were a water engineer, now you're a utility engineer.
I have many hats.
Many hats.
And a nice beard.
There was one time when I was a young lawyer that I was staff engineer, chief accountant, and staff counsel to the utilities, and now you know why the utilities are all screwed up, about 40 years ago.
Mayor, I have a request.
Sure.
I don't know exactly how to handle this, but going over the Title 18 code...
Yeah.
I suspect that that's going to take between one to two hours. We're supposed to be back in 80 minutes, so do we want to take care of the rest of the items on our morning agenda first?
Yeah, let's do it. Let's do it.
We were actually thinking about pulling the motel item and maybe moving that to the next meeting. And then if we could just give Lee a few minutes on the Title 18, he just want to get the word out for the public to be able to comment on the documents. We were thinking about pulling the motel item and moving that to the next meeting and then just giving Lee a few minutes on the Title 18, just to be able to get the word out to the public to, this was going to be a discussion item only, and just to be able to get the word out to the public to, for them to be able to comment on the Title 18 changes rightly.
Okay, so I'm not clear what you want to do right now.
Just saying she's pulling 14B, we could delay that next meeting.
What do you want to start off then?
And then just spend a few minutes maybe on 14A.
All right. Let's go to 14A.
Let's play it by ear.
14A.
Are we ordering lunch?
Yeah, you.
Hi. Good afternoon. For the record, Lee Plamow with Community Development Director. So, actually, what I want to do is take this up again at your October 1st meeting. So, that's just to start off so we don't have to spend a lot of time now. We're not going to get through 150 pages today. But I wanted to make sure I get before you and on the screen and out to the public because we want to continue to get public comment. The draft documents, you know, we're going through this in a process chapter at a time. We have a number of draft documents available at carson.org forward slash Title 18, carson.org slash Title 18. So, for the public and those, we sent out a press release, we started getting with the realtors and the Builders Alliance and have started to get the word out, but still not getting a lot of comments, so. And I know we don't have a lot of time now, so we want to bring up this item. I want to be able to take away, I've gotten some comments from some of you already to incorporate those comments, to prepare a list of substantive changes. So far, in working with the Planning Commission, it's been taken little pieces at a time. We haven't really done that, but now that we're kind of combining things and getting a lot of pages, I want to go back and have a list of all, where the substantive changes are, is to help your review, help the public review and everything. So, want to come back and bring it to you that way. So, we're kind of early in the process, we're on discussion items with the Planning Commission and Board. We're taking extra time as needed, like with this, taking it up next time with the Board, so we still have lots of opportunity for public comment and for amendments. So, just real, just a couple more real quick items I want to note. Right now, we're focusing on the substance of the existing sections as it's laid out in the code. I think, as Dan has mentioned in the past, when it comes to rewriting Title 18, we might be reorganizing things. There's definitely things in different areas that maybe should be together and things like that, but we're just taking it per the existing code and talking about some substantive issues. Also, some of the things that are in these chapters that we were, that's on the agenda today relate really directly to development standards that we're going to be talking about in future meetings. So, you know, at some point, we're going to come back with them all combined, and there's some, going to be additional discussion when we get into those development standards that apply to a lot of things in here. And just like, another minute if I could cover real quick, you know, the general approach from the, both staff and the Planning Commission in making the recommendations that we've got so far is, you know, under administrative provisions, it's really a lot of cleanup language. There's some substantive things in there related to findings that, the required findings are really just updating those, so I would focus your attention to that when you're reviewing it. And the definitions, there's just, there were a lot of definitions that weren't used, and as we're combining things, there's now a lot of definitions that aren't used, doing a lot of clarification, consistency changes, and deletion of unused definitions. And then, kind of one of the important things that we want to get feedback on from people is the, where permitted, where uses are permitted in zoning districts. And, you know, one of the big things in there is changing, going from each zoning district having a long list of all the permitted uses to just doing a use table that has the uses and then which zoning districts are in. So, I think that's a major change. We're not necessarily changing a lot where the uses are permitted, but I think that's just a more of a user-friendly format. But we are combining similar use descriptions such as retail uses, selling books is the same thing as selling masks, we don't need to have two separate items listed in there, what you're selling. Retail's retail, that's kind of best practices these days. It's a little bit more performance-based, if you're retailing something, it is. And also, as a general approach, the Planning Commission has really looked at the specific uses and expanded where uses are permitted. And that's looking at, you know, kind of, for example, in neighborhood business and residential office, there's some retail uses but not others, and let's expand it so all of those uses are in there. That's been a general kind of approach. There was one late material in there, a comment about the sale of used goods, and that's actually something I've heard and from a Board member or two as well, and something we want to go back. It's not in there now, but to parse out a thrift store versus other types of sale of used merchandise and consignment shops and things like that to allow a broader range of sales in these zoning districts. So, I, and then again, again emphasizing, there's upcoming workshops, we'll bring this back in October. The Planning Commission's moving on in October with continuing with chapters 1805 and starting on development standards. And please, everybody, to look at the documents at carson.org slash Title 18. So, that's really all, and I'm happy to take any comments and go back and look, communicate individually with you if you have comments and work on them for next time, respond to you as I have. And so, that's what I wanted to make sure I got covered today, so thank you. Be available to deal with it, take comments how you'd like now.
Let's see where it goes. Brad?
So, Lee, then what you're asking is for all of us or for members of the public to submit all of their questions or suggestions to you directly? You'll incorporate that, if appropriate, into a new document for our review for the October meeting?
Correct.
Okay. That will be very helpful. I have another couple sets that I'll email to you from people.
Yeah, and thank you for the, it's very helpful, actually. It's been really good discussion. I think the Planning Commission's doing a good job. As we go through this, it's going to be, we're doing what we can. It's an unfortunate situation where we can't have the public at meetings and we go out to the public and go out to these meetings and have the discussions that we've been able to do in the past when we're doing things, and it's big. But, and I think in the end of the, at the end of this process of updating Title 18 within the next year, we're going to have a good document. There's always going to be things, little things we miss along the way, but it'll be much better.
Stacy. Chief.
So, Lee, how are you going to handle those things? As an example, the item I brought to you about the accuracy of applications where, you know, you haven't reached a definitive answer, I don't have a definitive answer, as we present things like that to you that aren't sort of clear-cut or easy to incorporate, how are you going to track those? And, I mean, will you highlight them, bring them back to us and say, "This is a decision point"? Is that the plan?
Yeah, plan to highlight, like you said, highlight them and bring them back as a decision point if it's not something that's obviously how to find out, yeah.
Okay. All right.
All right. Any other questions of recommendations, Lee? You going to bring this back then?
I want to make a comment. I know this is a lot of work. It's, it was a lot of work for us to read, and we didn't have to do anything but read it. So, thank you, guys, for working on it. I know it's killing you and the Planning Commission and the DA's office. We appreciate the work because we're making a much better document, so I appreciate the efforts.
Okay. Anything else? You want to take a break for lunch?
I do.
We okay to take a break for lunch?
No.
Aubrey had one item.
Say again, tell, speak up or forever hold your peace.
I think Aubrey has an item.
Let's take it up, Aubrey.
I will make it very short.
Don't worry about making it short. We want to know what you're doing. So does the rest of the world and the country.
Yeah, so this is Aubrey Rellet, clerk recorder for the record, and there is an upcoming election, November 3rd.
The agenda item, I know what it is, but you put it under, what is it?
It's, I basically just wanted to update you that we are going to have in-person voting as well as an all-male election, so we're basically administering two styles of an election. The in-person location will be at the community center, and we're going to be social distancing. It will be at the community center throughout early voting as well as on election day, so beginning October 17th through November 3rd. And then the male portion of the election, mail ballots will be mailed out to out-of-state voters the end of September as well as to the in-state voters early October. We will have a ballot drop box at Fuji Park at the south end of town, which will be manned by election workers. That drop box location will be open only during polling location hours, so people can't go there at night and drop off a ballot. All of that information will be available in the sample ballot. Sample ballot should be mailed out the end of September as well. It's about a 51-page document, so all the ballot questions are in there. There's six questions. There's actually five, but question five does not exist, so there's, it's kind of confusing, one through four, and then ballot question number six.
I didn't understand that, Aubrey. Don't worry about going too fast. I didn't understand, what'd you say right there?
So, for the ballot questions in the sample ballot, you have questions one through six, but ballot question number five does not actually exist because of the numbering that they have. They have to carry the same number that they had in the previous election. So, ballot question number six comes after...
Four.
Four. So, that will be something new for the voters this year to also look at when they look at their sample ballot.
How are you going to explain that one to people? Hey, you taking a ballot pressure off?
I know. I really played with the wording on that, but it is pursuant to statute, so I just put the statute in the sample ballot that it adheres to.
Say something, remove by statute.
Right.
All right.
Right. So, like I said, there will be in-person voting. We will be social distancing. I would just ask the public to be very patient, check out the early voting schedule, see if there's a day other than election day that may work with their schedule, that they could come in. We'll have voting machines six feet apart. We're doing our very best to keep everybody safe that wants to come in to vote, but those that want to mail their ballot, they can vote it at home, drop it in the mail, we'll, our office will receive it. It'll go through the same process it did for the primary election. Or if they don't want to drop it in the mail, we'll have, like I said, that ballot drop box at Fuji Park. They can bring it to the community center. They can also drop it off at the clerk's office, but that is one thing I did want to point out. The clerk's office is not a polling location for this election. It's too small. We couldn't social distance there. So, everything will be happening at the community center for this election. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I think there is a, lights on up here. Go ahead, I don't know who's first. Chief.
I appreciate the work you've put in. I know it's killing you, and, you know, you got another 60 days or so to go.
I think there's lights on up here. Go ahead. I don't know who's first. Chief.
I appreciate the work you've put in. I know it's killing you, and, you know, you got another 60 days or so to go. So hang in there. I had a lot of questions. Probably four or five people asked me, why did we pick, why did you pick Fuji Park instead of somewhere in the middle of town for the ballot box? And are we married to that or, and it sounds like we probably are at this point, but what was the thought behind that?
The thought was to help with the south end of town. There's the Shoals Ranch area. There's Prison Hill area. And with all the construction going on, the thought process was to try to help voters have a place that they didn't have to necessarily drive all the way through town to drop off a ballot. We're married to it for this election. Carson City is also, large venues that would facilitate in-person voting or a polling location was difficult to come up with. We did look at, you know, using the library or additional places, but I just can't keep the traffic safe. I can't keep pedestrians safe as they're turned across the streets during heavy business. So I felt that Fuji Park would help bring some of that to the south end of town.
And you said that ballots can be dropped off in person at the community center, but once polling starts, not before that?
Correct. If they want to drop them off before polling location hours, they can bring them into the clerk's office. We'll take them over the counter. But yes, the community center will only be open during polling location hours.
Two more quick questions. We don't have a way to track whether you've received a mailed-in ballot, correct?
We don't have an electronic way to track that. You can always contact our office, and we will let you know if we have received it or not.
Okay, that's great to know. Thank you. And I know there was a slight issue with the printer last time around. Just make sure that's taken care of this time around.
Correct. We went with a different printer for our absent ballots, mail ballots. Again, I've never used this one before, so I'm, they've been very cooperative with us, but again, I
That they were aware of that last issue.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much.
Brad?
The concerns that I've received are mainly centered in two categories. The first being, being able to vote in person. So as you've said, and everybody hopefully will know now, any voter can vote in person.
Correct. Any voter, active, inactive, if you need to come in and same-day register, they can come to the community center polling location and vote in person.
Correct. If they choose to, they can vote in person, period.
Correct.
The second issue is the ability for ballot harvesters to pick up ballots and bring them in. So we have a, an extensive verification process in place. Can you please walk the public through the fact that, that when, if somebody goes out there and collects 100 ballots and brings them in, you don't just run them through a scanner and it totals all the votes and you're all done? There is an extensive verification process that goes into every single ballot. So can you walk us through that?
I sure can. Thank you for bringing that up. It is a hot topic. We do have an extensive verification. It consists of my staff as well as election workers who are bipartisan. So once a ballot is mailed in or received by our office as a mail-in ballot, we sort them. Initially, we look through them, make sure that they have a signature. If they don't have a signature, right away, we're contacting that voter, letting them know, hey, we've received your ballot. There's no signature. You'll need to come in and cure that with our office. For the remaining ones that get sorted with a signature, they then go into what is called the verification process. So we actually date stamp each one. We log them into a log. We hand log them into a spreadsheet log by precinct so that we know for that day we've received these ballots by these registration numbers. We pull up each ballot record, the registrant's record, and we verify the signature on the outside of that envelope to that registrant's record. If it doesn't match the initial, the most current one that we have on file, we have signatures from every application that they've ever submitted or document that they've signed. So we're able to pull up all of those images and see how that signature may have changed through the lifetime of that voter. If the initial reviewer feels that it's not a match, it is marked on the spreadsheet. It is held within that same batch. The whole batch is reviewed, and then that batch goes to a secondary reviewer who will then review any of those ballots who were a discrepant signature. So they will also pull up the record. They do their own independent review of the signature. And if it's determined that it is a match to that person, so say the two workers can't agree, a third person is brought in to also do that review and to break the tie. If both people do not feel that the signature matches, the ballot is then sent to the cure process where we contact the voter by whatever information we have and try to get them in to cure their ballot. Throughout that process, our staff is trained to look for signatures that, tendencies of signatures. It's hard to get into. If you see it, you can tell the characteristics of signatures. It is, it is a process that we take very, I don't know what the word is. We take it very seriously. We're not just randomly looking at ballots and looking at every other one. We're looking at every single ballot that comes in. Once we determine that a cure needs to be handled, the voters contacted again by whatever information we can. So that's a plea to all the voters in Carson City. Make sure that your information is up to date with our office so we can contact you. We'll call you. We'll email you. We'll send you a letter. We'll do whatever we can to get you into the office. There's a way to actually cure your signature by text. That was a new process that we got to try at the primary. It worked really well. You can come into our office or you can send in, in the mail, what it's going to take to verify your signature. Does that answer your question?
I can tell you that my, I had to be verified. My signature hasn't changed in years, but there was something off on it. The way I signed it, I was on a weird surface, whatever it was. But I had to go through that process where I got a letter and had to have it verified and prove that I was who I said I was. So it does work.
Aubrey, can you also confirm that our voting machine system is a standalone system, is not connected to the Internet? Therefore, it's not hackable?
Correct. I can confirm that.
And we had some issues in the primary with the reporting, the final reporting. Have there been any changes made from the primary so that we are anticipating that we've fixed that? And also, how are you going to report the initial and early voting results? Will it be the same where you'll do it on a daily basis?
I'm not sure what you're referring to as far as problems with reporting.
And the, the, the reporting on the early voting was delayed on the night of the election. I think that we were the last jurisdiction in Northern Nevada that reported. And so, you know, there's a lot of people looking for that information, especially on the early voting, which isn't going to change, right? You already had that counted by the time the polls closed.
So we are under, we can't release results until the state tells us that we can actually release results. The county-wide results we can release. On Election Night, there's a lot going on. We're not trying to not provide results, you know, quickly. We're reading ballots. We're making sure that we have everything accounted for. I wasn't aware that we were the last jurisdiction to report, but we can certainly work on that. I don't want to rush it and miss something. Again, we are bound by the state to tell us when we can release all of the results. So the county results, we can release as soon as we have those tabulated. With the passage of AB4, we also are now under the mandate to accept cured signatures through the ninth day after the election. In the primary, it was the seventh day. So that's going to add some time. It's really hard to balance, and because we don't have a precedent set for this type of election, we have the primary now, but we didn't at the time. It's hard to gauge how to report, when to report, because I have to keep, I have to keep a volume of ballots available for reporting. I can't just read every night. If we have two ballots, it would be identifiable to how those people voted. So we have to keep ballots in our office and then report as we have the volume available to report, which is what makes it really difficult to tell people, we're going to report this night, this night, and this night. Because depending on the volume of ballots we get in the mail after the election, I may not be able to. So I know it's a frustration, and I know that people are waiting for those results. But I would just also ask that there's some patience on our end as this is all new. We are administrating two types of elections, so we are having to take the in-person tally as well as the mail tally, which our systems are not set up to do that. So it's basically two processes. And again, I would rather report accurately than quickly.
So is there not also something new that someone else can sign someone's ballot? So can you discuss how you're going to do verifications on those?
So if an individual assists a person with a ballot, they are required to sign their name. I don't have the bill in front of me, unfortunately, but they are required to give us information that they assisted that voter so that we can identify that the voter did not complete that ballot. Other than that, those are what, that's what we can require. We, in the primary, we had the same situation. People sign POA. And we had to get a letter from them stating why and who they are, their information. Said if there's ever a question from the voter, we can say this person said that they had permission from you to assist them. The part in AB4 that's new for me, we're going to have to work up some processes and procedures to follow up with the voters, but they will be contacted. Their signature, if it doesn't match, it's not going to match. We're going to contact them. And if somebody says they assisted the voter, we'll get the appropriate information.
So can I clarify on that? So there won't be a match to the actual voter because, you know, maybe my mom has broken hands or whatever, so I sign it for her. But you're still going to contact her, and she can verbally say, I gave my daughter this person permission, and you can match that signature?
If that information is not provided with the ballot. So if it's just a signature that doesn't match, they're going to get a cure letter from us. If the information is provided with the ballot stating that they have assisted this voter, they've signed, then that information, it would be processed.
And so there's no validation of any of that? So if I wrote my own letter that I did my mom's ballot, you're going to take it? There is absolutely no validation of those, if it comes in with a letter that says, I assisted my mom with her application. That's the way it goes. Those are accepted.
This is a new process, and I have to reread AB4 before I can totally answer that question. Again, we don't have all of our procedures and processes yet in place. But I can certainly take a look at that and see where the law would allow me to do some more verification.
Or even the percentage. Was it so small? We only had 10 people that got help with their application versus, hmm. We had 5,000 people get help with their applications.
Right. In the primary, we had two.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Two isn't gonna, but anyway, you got the point. Thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. You do a lot. And now you're the most important person in the city and will be for the next two months. And as far as I'm concerned, you have all my support. And as a person who spent a half a century in the news business, take your time and ignore all the pressure. This thing doesn't need to be done at any point in time until it's done. Or as Orson Welles used to say about wine, we'll sell one before it's time. Do it right, and I know you will.
Thank you.
Aubrey, do we have a form power of attorney at the clerk's office?
No, we do not have those forms.
So when you mention power of attorney, you're talking, somebody could just make up their own power of attorney then? I mean, if I tell you, Laurie was mentioning, hey, she writes a letter. I guess that could be a power of attorney in a sense, but it doesn't have to be anything formal then?
No. Again, I need to go back and reread that bill, but to my understanding, it's a statement from the person assisting as well. I'll have to double-check the wording.
It's okay.
The voter needs to put that statement as well.
All right.
See how the person, then they could have filled out their ballot and signed. They can sign a letter, sorry.
But sometimes, I mean, the law
Time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, sometimes, you know, people sign by X. I mean, that's legal under Nevada law too, so.
Right.
All right. All right. Anything else, Aubrey?
No, just have
Our hearts is with you.
Thank you.
We know you go through a lot. You let us know if there's anything we can do to help. Work the DA out pretty hard. Hear that, Dan? Okay. All right, all right. Thanks, Aubrey. Thanks for all, again, thanks for all you do. Because at the end of the day, it is, we want to make sure that, you know, we're doing everything we can to make sure that this is a fair election, that there's nobody cheating or things like that. I was going to ask you, if you were going to cheat, how would you cheat? But I won't.
Don't ask her out.
I won't ask, yeah. Okay. All right. All right. Let's take a break till, what is it? Oh, not again. Nancy, we're going to have to figure out these, these agenda, because this is not right. So what do you got now?
Oh, just item 16. Just do we want to move that to the end?
Let's take it up.
To address that. That's the Board of Supervisors non-action items.
You want to take that up now?
No, at the end of the meeting.
So what are you
Move to the end of the meeting.
You want to move to the end of the meeting now?
No, no.
No, just move that item to the end of the board meeting after lunch.
Wait a minute. Okay. Somehow I thought that was at the end already. Okay. All right, we'll move item 16 to the end of the agenda unless there's objections. Is that all right? Okay. Anything else I need to know?
And 14B, we're postponed.
Right. Sorry for all the stuff, but, you know, we've got to look at these agendas, how much time we've got. If we're going to, if we're going to have two days' worth of agenda, let's set up two days. Because we can't keep doing this, so, and I know that, I'm just preaching to me as well as everybody else, so, all right. Take a break till 1:30. Is that when we're on? 1:30.